Welcome to the July meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. Please rise for the allegiance. For those of you that are new to the procedures of the zoning board of appeals, the meeting is divided into two halves. During the first part, we hold public hearings on all of the applications that have been submitted in the previous month. We take these in the order that they are listed on the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, it's available in this little black tray next to our council's desk. For each, in each of the public hearings, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask the applicant to give just a very brief review of why they are before us, what is the application about. And then, members of the ZBA will have an opportunity to ask questions and to get further information about the application. When all of the ZBA members have asked questions, the floor will be open for any member of the public to address that application, but that application only. And also, everyone that wishes to comment must also be sworn in. Once we've worked our way through the agenda, we'll then return to the top for the deliberation phase. And during this part of the meeting, there is no further public input. The board members will discuss each of the applications and then vote on whether to approve or deny the particular application. You're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. You're also free to go if the hour gets late. And you can call the zoning department in the morning to get the results of the deliberations. For the record, we, two of our regular members are not with us this evening. So Paul Leahy, who's the first alternate, and Phyllis Capone, where are you, Phyllis? Okay, you should come forward. They will be voting members of the, regular voting members of the ZBA. One of our members may arrive late, but at this point, we don't know. And we'd like to get the meeting started. Okay, having covered all of the kind of routine, we'll start out with item number one, Mike Neshawat, 111 Spackenkill Road. Okay, can you just state your name for the record?
Mr. Martin, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, this is, this is an application that's been adjourned a couple of times, so I don't think we need to rehearse it. But if you would just briefly summarize the new materials that you have submitted to us.
... The result of the last meeting, we asked for the apartment, I think one room we had labeled as an office, and we labeled it, I think according to the code it cannot be that way, it has to be a bedroom, so we labeled it as a bedroom, snapshot of a bedroom house. Those plans were, were stamped. And also, we needed, I think we also submitted the ID, the ID used to be in LLC, now, now in his personal name. And lastly, we also got three proofs of, not only his ID, but the fact that he gets mail at that address.
Okay, excuse us for a moment, we're having trouble with your microphone. Yeah, no, this, this one works. Yeah.
How about the other one?
Hmm. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get that working somehow.
Definitely.
Try, would you try speaking into your...
Testing, testing, oh, it's working now? One, two, three, testing?
Yeah, yeah, yours is, yours is good. Betty, yours was working a minute ago.
Testing.
These sound like we're all on.
We're all good? Okay, all right. My apologies, but we have to, we have to be able to record everything.
Want me to recap that again?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, at the last meeting, the board asked for about three things, as, for three or four things. If you recall, the, we did a plan, a scale plan of the apartment to calculate square footage. I believe according to the code, what we had listed as an office, by, I think by code, it either has to be an office, excuse me, it has to be a bedroom or something else. So we did list it. It's now shown as a two-bedroom apartment. And those plans, we did seal. And then also, if you recall, originally when we made the application, the name was in an, in his LLC. It's been changed back to his personal residence. And lastly, we did submit three proofs of ID or the fact that he gets mail at that particular address, being 111 Spackenkill Road.
Okay. All right, I guess, right off the bat, I guess I have a question for our council. We now have documentation that this is a two-bedroom apartment.
Correct.
And the criteria for a special use permit for an accessory apartment specifies that it be a one-bedroom apartment.
Right, we had discussed at the last meeting that the applicant was either going to come back with something showing that the second bedroom was going to be made a walk-in closet or something like that with shelves so that it couldn't be used as a bedroom, or an application for a variance from the code provision so that it could be a two-bedroom. And the applicant at the meeting had indicated that he was leaning toward making it a closet and, so, but in the interim, we, it has to be one or the other, because the board is not permitted to grant the special use permit unless the application provides with all code provisions, and it would need to have the variance before the special use permit could be granted.
Okay, okay. So do you...
Well, all right, I mean, I mean, I can, I can change it to a closet, and the applicant owner said that he would do that. And I'm willing to do that, and I'll give you new plans of that effect, if that would be, that's certainly, to kind of move it off-center, move forward, you know?
Yeah. As, as far as I know, and members of the board can, can ask questions or whatever, as far as I know, that would be the final item that would let us move forward on...
Right.
On deciding on a special use permit.
Do you use it?
I mean, does, does anybody have, yeah, Paul?
Well, I have to tell you that I was, I tended to believe that he was a resident until he submitted this documentation. One document includes what purports to be his driver's license with his new address written in the back. I don't know whether or not he's notified the Department of Motor Vehicles. The second is a, what purports to be a Central Hudson bill in Mike Neshawat, 111 Spackenkill Road. However, the billing address is Mike Neshawat, 3638 Albany Post Road. I find that insufficient, at best, to show proof of residence. And then, the statement of county and town taxes, it was paid by Mike's Auto Center. I find those documents insufficient to indicate that he's a resident of the property which is required for the special use permit. So I don't believe we're quite there yet, at least in my mind.
Okay, so we need further documentation of residency?
That, that's my position, yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
Paul, I'm just finding it hard to relate to all these changes. Every week, every month, it's a different thing. It's gonna be a one-bedroom, it's not gonna be a one-bedroom, it's gonna be a closet, it's not gonna be a closet. I mean, as far as faith, I find it hard to, to honestly feel that we're gonna get much accomplished here.
Well, I, I agree with you. This has been, this has been a somewhat complicated and a, and a long process. I mean, we started out back, what, in March, I believe? And, but, you know, at, at some point, we have to come to a decision. And I think we have to get the documentation that's required for us to make sure that each one of the criteria are met. Now, you know, it's still, you know, we're, we're not, we're not obliged to grant this special use permit, but we, I think we do have to make sure that each one of the criteria are, are met.
If I could make a suggestion on the residency or occupancy, I would be satisfied with something from the Department of Motor Vehicles, an abstract, or, and his voter registration card, some indicia, some official indicia of occupancy, which I think is the standard, actually, rather than residency, but...
Okay. All right, so it looks...
If I could, if I could just make a comment?
Yes, certainly.
Is that, first of all, that, that deed was changed back just prior to our last meeting. These bills were, this tax bill was paid in May.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any, it's just what you submitted, to me, is not sufficient to show that he occupies it. I don't, I don't have any question that he's transferred the deed, I don't have any question in fact that Mike's Auto Center paid the mortgage, but to me, submitting a bill, a mortgage, or a tax bill paid by Mike's Auto Center, to me, doesn't satisfy me that he occupies the residence. What would satisfy me is a voter registration card, as well as an abstract from the Department of Motor Vehicles, that he actually changed his address, and, and something else from an official agency indicating he resides or occupies that residence.
Okay, so as, so as I understand it, we need plans for the conversion of that second room into a closet, and the proof of residency?
He's gonna need a building permit. You'll need a, a building permit to convert the two-bedroom into a one-bedroom, is that correct?
It's not structural, I'm not sure that he would have to get a building permit.
I wouldn't think a building permit would be required. I would suggest to the applicant that either he can come back with plans for the built-in, which would be required to be in place before CO would be given, before the special use permit, or since he has now a little bit of time, he has to come back with other information. Anyway, he can discuss with the applicant whether you want to seek a variance and make it a two-bedroom, and come back next month with a variance application, and that would alleviate the need for that, or at least for the board's consideration, so...
I would tell you, though, that based upon the parking situation, I would probably be disinclined to grant a variance for a two-bedroom apartment, if that's in any way goes into your client's thinking.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If it, if it's changed to become a closet, which we thought it was going to be, at least I was one of, I think, a few board members that thought that was gonna be what we were gonna be presenting with this evening, is that going to require a building permit, did you say?
I don't think it would, because it's not structural.
So...
I think what would be required would be an inspection by the building inspector prior to the certificate of occupancy being granted to allow the building to be used, to allow the, so there would be official oversight, but it wouldn't be a building permit.
My, my point was, I just didn't know if it was gonna require that we make another field trip and physically inspect the interior?
It would require town staff to...
That's fine, thank you.
Inspect.
Okay. All right, so pending the receipt of those, of these items that we've discussed, I think what we'll, what we do now is simply adjourn this hearing to next month.
Is that enough time?
Yes. Your next meeting, your next meeting is...
August 8th.
The materials would, would need to be submitted by, by July 21st. Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn item number one to our...
We have a question, Jim?
Hmm?
You have a question back there?
Oh, okay. Yeah, come forward, please. Okay, if you'd state your name, please.
Irene Monk.
Ms. Monk, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. I just have one question, because we've been here for two years. The apartment had been illegally renovated prior to his ownership. There was a kitchen there, after last, you know, when Mr. Ficory pulled the kitchen out to understanding, right? So now, we now have a kitchen again. So my question is about building permits, it's not structural. Where's the kitchen that now, because he, you know, Mr. Neshawat made it into an illegal apartment and was renting it? Where are we standing with that kitchen that shouldn't be there? Because I understand, I, I'm not against him doing it legally, and every, it seems like everything slowly is getting clearer. I think things are getting rectified, which is a good thing.
Right.
So that's my only question, is, does he need a building permit for that kitchen? Because technically, there shouldn't be one there.
My, my understanding in, in speaking with the building department, that there's no outstanding violations on that structure right now. Whatever they may have had in the past, have been taken care of.
No, but there's a kitchen there now.
Well, as of the time of the application, there were no violations.
But the building department know there was a kitchen there?
Well, in, in any case, before anything can happen, there has to be a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, but you understand, I'm just trying to, it would speed it up.
Right, and...
Because there's something there now.
It would be during that process that, that they would go and make sure that there are the appropriate permits and inspections for, you know...
Okay, I, I mean, just in the spirit of not...
Electrical, plumbing, you know, the...
Just in the spirit of not delaying this further, because this is all time. I mean, Mr. Neshawat lives there. We see him come home every night, he's there 99% of the time. I think that's just a bygone, he will be confirmed. So I think that just to make it clear is that there's a kitchen there now.
Okay.
And I, just to put it in your mind, that's gotta be resolved, you know? So that was my question.
Yeah, well, I mean, thank you for raising it. My, I believe this is something that is under the purview of the building department, we can, we can...
No, I understand, the building department probably would have been a part of it, had it been legally put there in the first place. So that's my problem, it wasn't, there's another detail.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can certainly...
The building department is aware of it?
Okay, no, that's fine.
And they will go out, they will go out and inspect it as soon as...
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just...
Things are cleared up here.
Just, just to resolve this faster.
Yeah, yeah. The, I mean, one of the provisions in granting a special use permit is that all of the building codes and inspections and COs have to take place before the special use permit becomes valid.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Nope, okay, fine.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions, either from the board or from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn item number one to...
August 8th.
August 8th.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're August 8th. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Items number two and three, Wayne McDonald? No?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah? Okay. Yeah, items number two and three, Wayne McDonald, 12 Ridgewood Terrace. And if both of you gentlemen would identify yourselves and be sworn in.
Wayne McDonald?
Steve Bernaby.
Garvey, was that the name?
Bernaby.
Bernaby. Mr. Bernaby, Mr.?
McDonald.
McDonald. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and as I understand it, this item was adjourned at the last meeting because there needed to be a second variance added to allow the parking or storage of motor vehicles in the front yard. And this is in addition to the variance you're applying for, for a proposed carport to be located five feet, six inches from the side lot line. Okay, now, before we begin, let me, we've received some correspondence that I need to read into the record. And it's to the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA. It's dated July 6th, from Dennis and Barbara Powers, 16 Ridgewood Terrace. And it concerns the, the variance, both variances, for the carport and for the extension of the driveway. "We have lived in the neighborhood for 43 years. We, just like the petitioners, have a one-car garage, but because we have too many things stored in our garage, we've parked all our vehicles outside. It's a personal choice, such as including a washer and dryer in the garage area, thereby excluding the ability to house a Classic or any other car. A year ago, before the petitioner requested a variance for a much larger structure attached to the house, there was an apparent motor vehicle, there were apparent motor vehicle repair jobs occurring, evidenced by garbage cans tightly filled with car exhaust pipes extending a few feet outside the cans. As a senior citizen and a volunteer Vietnam veteran, I was shocked that the garbage trucks picked them up. Cars were also pulling up to the house for repairs. Concerns: One, it would be detrimental to the neighborhood if the Classic car that the petitioner had been working on outside of the garage would be returned. As mentioned in previous zoning board of appeals hearings, the car emanated noxious fumes in addition to the loud noises. The appearance of a blacktop driveway, two, the appearance of a blacktop driveway with the addition of a proposed gravel driveway, total 36 feet, could possibly affect property values. Three, the possibility of car repairs other than the petitioner's vehicles would not be good in a residential neighborhood." And as I said, that is signed Dennis and Barbara Powers. Okay, I believe those are the only new things in the, in the packet, so, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Well, just to recap, last year's proposal was a permanent structure about 20 feet wide by 25 feet deep, the size of, the depth of the house. We're currently back with a temporary structure, 12 by 20, just enough to house the car, you know, his Classic car that we're talking about here. There is other houses in the neighborhood that have driveway widths greater than the 10 feet that's required, or permitted in this, in this area. And I know, I believe we've submitted photos, 21 Ridgewood, I believe, has a gravel and blacktop driveway, similar to what we're proposing here. So the, the structure, again, we're proposing is temporary in nature, it's just to provide cover for his car, so that when, so that he can keep it at his house, and, you know, be able to use it, you know, when needed, without having to drive somewhere else to go get in it, and then drive somewhere where, where his intended destination was. So that's it, you know? The fact that, you know, there were exhaust pipes in a garbage can one night, you know, he changed the exhaust last year, you know, we talked about that. But it's, it's a residential lot, there's no business going on there, he's solely working on his own car, his wife's car, his daughter's car. That's it.
Okay. Paul, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
No, I don't think so. I think we pretty much exhausted most of them.
All right.
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so, and, but I've, I've reviewed the case, but I, but I have at least one question, and that's, why can't the, the car be stored and, and worked on in the backyard? Simply extend...
There's a septic system in the backyard, and a tree blocking the way in.
Okay. Yeah, I, I had a look at it, it looked to me like you could drive around the tree, but I don't know where the septic system is. Now, I noticed you've got another temporary storage...
Yeah, that was, that was originally over top of my ramp that was out front, I was told to move it, so I moved it.
That structure that's in the back, the reason why the original structure was so large was to house additional things, four-wheeler, lawnmowers, and other things.
Right.
We've come back with a smaller structure on the side to park the car adjacent to the driveway, rather than driving through the yard whenever he wants to use it. Now, again, it's a Classic car, he's not gonna be driving in and out daily, but, you know, to try and go in and out of the yard with a Classic car, can park right alongside the house, where the rest of the driveway is, and other cars...
So there's, there's not room in the structure in the rear of the house?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, that's now housing my, my lawnmower, my four-wheeler, any of the stuff that wouldn't, that needs to be covered. The original proposal, where I wanted to make a larger one?
Mm-hmm.
That's what's housing all that stuff now.
Okay, all right. Larry?
I have questions.
Tony?
No, no questions.
Carmen?
No, no questions.
Okay. If there are no further questions from the, from the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 12 Ridgewood Terrace? Okay.
There is someone.
Oh, oh, yes. Please come forward. And your name, sir?
Michael Sean Koalif.
Michael Sean Koalif, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody, just want to start off with, just a, want a clarification on that actual quote-unquote property line that was strung up by our neighbor, Mr. McDonald. If that's actually how that line came to be, if that was a surveyor, if that was a document from the assessor's office, I don't know where that came from. It seemed a bit suspect to me. We didn't have anything reviewed ourselves by anybody who could verify the property line, but I question if that's accurate. With that being said, I just want to start out by pointing out what a challenging situation this is for my wife and me. It's clear that we are here again to request that this variance be denied, and that causes a conflict between the McDonald's and us, obviously. We try to be respectful. to be respectful in the things we do or don't do as residents of our neighborhood, so despite our discomfort in dealing with this conflict, we do feel it's important to speak up, especially since we're the ones most greatly affected as the next-door neighbor. Living next to the McDonald's has presented some several inconveniences that we've learned to accept, such as noise and fumes generated from working on cars and other types of vehicles, compressors being run at various times of day and night for vehicle work, driving ATV's up and down our residential streets, parking a truck in front of our lawn despite the fact he has a garage, a paved driveway, a gravel path, a ramp installed on a concrete slab, and a space in front of his own home to park. Heavy metal music plays very loudly in an otherwise quiet neighborhood. My son recently had some friends over to play in the backyard, and this small group of five-year-olds and their mothers had to endure loud and profane heavy metal music. All these things I've listed were extremely challenging when dealing with a small child's nap and sleeping routine. We're worried that allowing this structure to be installed would bring those problems back. Not a desirable situation since our second child will be born in the fall. We acknowledge that there are probably no established rules against anything I just mentioned. It just comes down to common neighborly courtesy. We don't think we can actually stop Mr. McDonald from keeping his Classic car on his property if he wants to. It's his choice and his prerogative. But with this variance application, he's requesting something unnecessary, and that is a result of a self-created situation, and it will impact the appearance of the neighborhood and values of properties. The neighborhood consists of a diverse group of families and homes, including homes with single-car garages like ours and the McDonald's have. What is consistent is that everyone makes do with their lot and what it allows. No one has an additional structure like the one Mr. McDonald is requesting, and nothing that sits so close to anyone else's property line. It is what my family will have to look at every time we look out our kitchen window. The McDonald's have a garage that is currently not being used to protect any vehicles. It is filled with equipment and tools. He has claimed that it is not large enough for the Classic car he has. I question the validity of this statement. The McDonald's garage seems to be about the same size as ours while we park a small SUV. Not being able to use his garage for any of his vehicles is his own choice. There are many residents in our neighborhood that use their garage for other purposes, like laundry or storage. They are still able to park their vehicles properly off the street and in their driveways without having to erect any kind of structure, temporary or permanent, and without having to extend their driveways with gravel. There's another resident on our street that houses a Classic car in his garage without posing any inconvenience, inconvenience to anyone around him. Mr. McDonald has expressed, expressed that he does work and performs repairs on his vehicles like anyone else might. No one else has to pour a concrete slab with a ramp or have a garage filled with tools and equipment to do so. Plenty of people in the neighborhood perform repairs to their own vehicles, but not at the expense of their neighbors. The zoning board has presented other possible solutions, like another location on the property or another type of shelter for his vehicle. Mr. McDonald has responded that those options are too expensive or inconvenient, or that his wife doesn't want it that way. The neighbor should not have to pay the price. It's obvious that Mr. McDonald wants to do this in a manner that works for him, with little consideration of how it affects his neighbors. That was clear when his application last year was denied, and he still proceeded to pour a concrete slab, install a metal ramp, create a gravel extension of his driveway, and erect an enormous tent. We have lived in our home for about six years, and we're trying to create a place where we can continue to raise our family, like the owners before us did, and many of the residents of the neighborhood are trying to do. Several homeowners have recently made improvements to their home, which has improved the neighborhood even further. We personally have spent thousands of dollars replacing and improving our front steps, walkway, and landscaping. We personally have spent thousands of dollars replacing, I'm sorry, we have spent a lot of money to remove a tree from the front of our property that could have caused damage to our home and the McDonald's home. We purchased that house that fit our needs at the time we purchased it. We have adapted it to grow with our needs in a way that doesn't negatively affect our neighbors. And when necessary, we have adapted our needs to fit within the limitations of our lot and the rules of the town. The zoning board knows what can and cannot be done in respect of the regulations and limitations that have been previously established. Clearly, it's our hope that the variance will be denied. However, in case that the McDonald's application is approved and that this structure will be installed, we request a concession be made. We respectfully ask that the McDonald's be required to install a privacy fence along the entire property line, along with the installation of this structure. A privacy fence will not make the structure disappear for us, but is one way that we can think of to respect his request while minimizing the damage that will be done to our property and its value. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members? Any further comment from the audience? Okay. Does the applicant have anything further to add?
Yeah, I haven't worked on any vehicles in my yard since last October. I've been out injured from work. I have been out of work since last October. I'm, I'm, right now, my back is out. I was at the chiropractor today. I, there's no way I can work on cars, and when I do, I work on them in the driveway.
Okay.
This is specifically to store this car so it's out of the weather. There's no front, the item you see on the picture of the proposed temporary shelter has no front door. When I, when I move, which I intend to do when I retire in about eight to 10 years, I'd be taking that, that temporary structure with me when I move.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, is there a, a motion to close the public hearing on items two and three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Item number four.
Two and three. Wasn't two and three. There's nine.
I have the old one.
Yeah, you, yeah, you may want to get the updated agenda. The, the order of some things got changed.
Okay.
Okay, are we all on the same page here? Okay. So, items four and five are both concerning 22 De LaValle Place. Item number five has been withdrawn, so, and you can, you can simply cross that off. So, item number four.
Wait a minute, we had, we had adjourned that one to August 8. We're gonna, they withdrew it now?
They, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're doing this a little out of order, but let's just clarify this. This is a letter from Kelly Leibert, addressed to the board. On April 22, the applicant, SBRJ2, submitted two variance applications and a special use permit application. At this time, we are requesting the following: Withdraw the application for a special use permit for the second apartment. The application was previously seeking approval for two apartments on the second floor. However, the applicant has been advised that maintaining the second floor as one versus two apartments will be considered a legally non-conforming use. As such, he is asking to withdraw the special use permit for the second apartment and will maintain a single apartment on the second floor area. Okay, so, item five then has been officially withdrawn. That leaves us with item number four, and my understanding is that, is, are we?
Just doing the sign.
We're just doing the sign. So, okay, so, item number four then is a variance to allow a freestanding sign to be located on a property line where 10 feet is required.
Yes.
Okay, have I got, have I got all that right?
Well, let's go one step more. So, just procedurally, I'll defer to your attorney. We are not going to address the variance for the roof structure tonight, and I believe it's just unfortunate the way that they've been listed on the agenda, but I believe that we need to adjourn that one to the August meeting just to clean that one up. We'll move that to August.
Right. The applicants indicated that they want to make a further submission on that, so technically, that specific variance request will be, if the board concurs, would be adjourned until the August meeting.
Okay, so, do we do that right now?
That would be lovely.
Okay, so I move that the, the first variance in item four that asks for, to allow the construction of a second floor roof located less than one foot from a rear property line where 35 feet is required, I, I move that that variance request be adjourned to the August 8 meeting.
Second.
Second, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels? Okay, so now we're
Good.
only talking about the sign.
Correct.
Okay.
We're all focused now. Okay, so I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning.
Tom Walsh with Sign Language.
Ms. Leibert, Mr. Walsh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Just, I'll give a quick recap to bring the board up to speed and make sure everyone is in the same place. If you recall, I was here last month, and we were talking about this sign. And just to remind everyone, we're not here to request a variance for the size of the sign, or the type of the sign, the height of the sign, or the location of the sign. We're simply here to request a variance for the proximity of the planter, which is the base of the sign, which is too close to the property line. And just again, to remind everyone, this is a unique lot. I'm hoping many of you went out to the site visit and saw the property, the property line actually runs halfway through the parking spaces. So, half of the parking spaces closest to the building are on the property. The other half of the parking spaces, all the way around the property that are closer to the road, are not in the property. And so, when we put this planter in, unfortunately, because of the proximity of this unique line, the planter is right on the property line. So, the focus tonight is the setback of that planter relative to the property line. Now, there were discussions about the type of the sign and the visibility and so forth, and I believe on Wednesday, the board witnessed a mock-up of the sign. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, so Tom is here. We can answer any questions that you have. And so, that's where we are tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, any questions?
Nope.
Betty?
I'm good.
All right.
I'm good.
When, when I was there, and you were kind enough to put the, the, the mock-up up there, one, one of my comments, I walked underneath it and noticed that it was barely six feet off the ground. And I had some concern about, you know, folks that are 6'1" and up may be smacking their heads on the, on the bottom of that sign. Is there a, is there a way of putting it up a little higher, or is that?
Absolutely. I think when we were at the site, we made a conclusion that 11 feet would be sufficient height for anybody to walk underneath that sign. To slap it with your hand is a different story, but.
Right, right. So, the, the top of the sign, then, you're proposing to be 11 feet?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the bottom will be right at seven.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, you know, we may be losing a lot of star basketball players, but I guess, I guess we'll have to take that chance. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
So, the, the, this mock-up is not accurate any longer?
Well, that's showing 10 feet.
Only 10 feet.
Yeah.
So, you, you're proposing to go another, take advantage of the 11-foot?
One extra foot, unless you're saying, unless you want 12. I think the max is 15? Is that what's allowed? I think, I think it's 15 feet.
In, in, that would be in the BN. It's, it's a neighborhood business zone. I don't remember what the...
We're still under, as far as, I mean.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
What we normally do is if the ZBA makes an agreement or a modification to the plan, the next day, we submit an amended application.
I was just questioning the, this was.
Yeah, that would be changed to 11 feet.
Yeah. I, I think I, I remember that the area, the area of the sign had to be less than 50 square feet for that district, and I believe you're coming in with 28.
28, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Tony, anything else?
No.
Okay. Carmen, any questions?
Jim, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Can he use that bear pole? I thought we didn't allow poles any longer.
Oh.
Are we having a problem with that on that new restaurant group? So, on 376?
The restaurant is in a residential district, so that might be the reason. I don't, offhand.
This question?
I, I.
I thought it was prohibited in all.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
What is it, squares prohibited? Is that what you're saying?
No, bear pole.
Oh, okay. As opposed to a skirted base?
No, it's an I-beam or a steel pole.
Right.
Yeah.
Prohibited, I believe.
Oh, and I, it's not an I-beam, it's a square steel pole.
Yeah. What, what, yeah, so you've got a four-by-four square steel pole.
Okay.
I don't know, I just, because I know it impacts the other restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be under, under signs, the signs that are, are permitted in a BN. I always consult it online, and so I don't, I don't have a hard copy of the code that I can consult, but. Okay, sign regulations for all districts. Okay. What's permitted in a, okay, all right. These are signs permitted in, in a BN and a number of other districts. Shall not exceed 50 square feet. Doesn't, doesn't say anything about the pole.
No, I think that section is in the, there's a, a section about signs that are generally prohibited. It's a few sections back, and I think the prohibition was in there.
Do you see it, Brian?
The board wants to continue. I can find it while we're doing that and then let you know what it says.
Okay, okay. Okay, so are there any other questions from the board members?
Sure.
Okay. If, if not, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the sign variance for 22 De LaValle Place? Yes. Hi. Okay, need to state your name?
I'm, I'm Heinz Finkel.
Mr. Finkel, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
So, the neighbors and I are here to ask that you deny the variance for the monument sign at the edge of that intersection of North Grand and De LaValle. When the board members came over for the site check, I hope you noticed that there were no other business signs on De LaValle, Marble, Crestwood, Lindbergh, Ray Boulevard, or other streets in the neighborhood. And we want to maintain the residential character of this neighborhood. A large monument sign in its proposed location set out right on the edge of that property line will have a detrimental effect on the character of the neighborhood and reduce property values. There've been a large number of foreclosures in this neighborhood, and we need to preserve the residential quality to draw new homeowners. It's more in keeping with the quality, the residential quality of the neighborhood if the sign is set back the way it used to be. And I brought a, another, I was here at the last... And I brought another, I was here at the last meeting and I gave you a photo, I brought another photo of the old store and the placement of that original sign to show you that it is perfectly appropriate. And I hope Mr. Kumar will change his mind, so I'll give you these two photos. You'll also notice, if you look at those photos, and since you were also out there looking at the sign test, you'll notice that the current roof line, if you compare it to the old roof line, still permits a sign to be placed there. Now, what Mr. Kumar is proposing is more in keeping with a commercial street like Main Street, or perhaps Raymond Avenue, than, or Hooker, than D. Laval and Marple. I'm also asking that you consider how the sign will actually function in context with the current traffic problem, and deny the variance for that reason. It's a very dangerous intersection with the history of serious accidents. In fact, there was another major accident just down the street from there a few days ago. There's a visibility problem that's already exacerbated by the large flag next to the store. And I spoke at the town board meeting a couple months ago about the traffic problem at this intersection. Adding another illuminated distraction so close to the light is likely to contribute to the increase in the number of accidents here. So for vehicle safety and pedestrian safety, it's not an appropriate place to put a large sign. And its proposed position and its proposed size, and by the way, that one-foot elevation won't make a significant difference in the visibility issue. The sign will block visibility for tall vehicles, especially school buses and delivery trucks, and it poses an additional hazard. We get a large amount of truck traffic down D. Laval and Marple, and just under forty school buses coming up North Grand during the school year. Most school buses are about ten-point-five feet high, and the driver sits at a level that would be approximately the middle of that sign. School buses coming up North Grand will already have reduced visibility. And there are often young children who cross the street unattended. They go to the store to buy candy, which adds to the hazard. When there are other large vehicles on D. Laval and North Grand, especially the parked delivery trucks obstructing the street, the intersection gets even more dangerous. I brought a couple photos that I took the morning that you went out to do the sign test, to show you what you missed and what we're dealing with in the neighborhood on a daily basis. And they'll show a large Pepsi delivery truck and a school bus on D. Laval at the same time. The old store very rarely had large trucks parked outside. Usually, it was a small van that would make deliveries. Current store often has two of these large trucks parked outside on D. Laval and on North Grand, often for more than an hour at a time. We don't think the sign should be placed there because it would be yet another thing blocking visibility. So I'll pass these four photos around, and I'll explain what they are. These were taken around nine fifteen AM. So in the first photo, you'll see a black car, which is a regular on that street, and it's waiting out the red light behind the Pepsi truck. It's actually set way back from the traffic light, because the Pepsi truck is obstructing its view of the traffic coming up North Grand. This is to avoid someone who might make a left turn onto D. Laval, who wouldn't be able to see him. To pull up to the intersection, he would have to be in the far left of his lane, where he would be vulnerable to being hit by a car making a left onto D. Laval with his view blocked by the truck. You can see the cross-traffic in that photo. In photo two, you'll see that the black car has cars piling up behind it. The light has turned green, and cars are piling up behind it because it's being very cautious about moving up to the green light. You would think that the traffic light would resolve all these issues, but everyone who drives there knows that people regularly run that light, both on North Grand and on Marple, D. Laval. So because he's being very cautious about pulling forward, you can see that cars have piled up behind him, and one person was honking to urge him to go more quickly. In the third photo, you'll notice a school bus going east from D. Laval to Marple obstructed by the Pepsi truck. Its view of North Grand is obstructed, and it's having to cut into the oncoming lane to avoid the delivery truck to see past its cab. And that is actually precisely the, the school bus would have to see past the Pepsi truck's cab, but that's precisely where the proposed sign would be, and it would obstruct the school bus's line of sight. And as a teacher and a parent, this situation is something I would never want to see a school bus in, and we see it practically every day. And so I hope that gives you a clear sense. And keep in mind that when Mr. Kumar did the sign test for you, there was no representation for the planter base, the plants that were likely to be in it, or any three-dimensionality to the sign, which was represented by a piece of cardboard. Keep in mind that even without plants, the opening between the top of the planter and the bottom of the sign is only fifty-two inches. Elevating the sign a foot would make a bigger window there, but it doesn't significantly change the blockage at the top. All those factors will also contribute to limiting visibility. The test did not permit members of the board to view the obstruction from inside the cab of a truck or a school bus to establish the true nature of the hazardous obstruction. So the fourth photo, I included to show you the mock-up of the sign that's being held up, that Mr. Kumar did for the test later that day. If the zoning board members are wondering why there weren't more members of the community out during the sign test, it's because no one was notified, as members said we should be during the last zoning board meeting. I remember the plan was to have the sign actually available there, so members of the community could look at it for a number of hours. The sign wasn't set up for more than a few minutes, contrary to what the plan was. So a lot of people in our neighborhood are still working, like, today at 6:00 PM, so their voices can be heard. I'd like to read a petition that they signed. It says, the petition says, "We, the undersigned, request that the zoning board deny the variance for the ten-foot-high, seven-foot-by-four-foot illuminated sign on the corner of D. Laval and North Grand at twenty-two D. Laval Place. The proposed placement for this large sign is not in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood and will affect property values. A sign of these dimensions placed at this location would also be a distraction to an already dangerous intersection and is likely to be responsible for more accidents, particularly since it would obstruct the view of school buses and trucks at the intersection." So then, please keep in mind that in addition to the forty signatures on here, there are many more people in the community concerned about this issue. So I'll circulate the copy of the petition. So basically, to preserve the character of the neighborhood and the health and safety and welfare of the community, and to avoid contributing to an already dangerous traffic problem, I urge you to not approve the variance for the sign.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members about Mr. Finkel's comments or the materials? All right. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the applicant?
I have a question for this gentleman right here. Hi, Ellie, I'm...
Yeah, you need to come up and state your name.
My name's Gary Mains.
Mr. Mains, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
This is Tony. Yes, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
No, it's better. I don't know when you had those pictures taken.
Sir, could you, you have to direct your comments to the board?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know when he had those pictures taken.
They were around nine fifteen that morning.
But the date?
Same date, it was Wednesday, the day they came out to...
Well, the light up there has been out for a while, is what it has been, and the police have been notified. And I've been in that store myself, where his son came out there to direct traffic, so there was not an accident. And it was out for, I gotta say, maybe three weeks, almost a month, back and forth, is what it was. Now, you can't take a right on a red there, is what you can't do. So that sign's not going to be in the way of anybody. And I live on two Crestwood Boulevard, and all these people here live right next to me, and I've never seen this guy knock on my door to ask my opinion about it. So I personally feel that the sign should be allowed. That's what I feel. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to point out that the traffic light was functioning at the time that I took those photos.
Did you take photos of the traffic light not functioning?
Excuse me.
Sir?
Yeah, excuse me, you know, this, you know...
This issue is not about the traffic light.
Okay, um, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just remind everyone that speaking, that we not repeat comments, because I know we do have quite a few people here. We try to keep, if someone's already said it, not to be repetitive again.
I would agree.
My name is Robyn Takis. I live on one hundred North Grand Avenue.
Ms. Takis, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes.
Yes.
I've lived at one hundred North Grand Avenue, I'm like three houses from the deli. And yes, I understand what the gentleman is talking about as far as accidents occurring at that corner. I feel it's unrelated to the deli or the sign, and I believe it's been quite rectified because down the street at Lindbergh and North Grand, there has been placed a four-way stop sign. Most of the accidents that I've observed at that intersection was people trying to beat the two lights at D. Laval and Lindbergh, and that's where accidents were increased. Since I've seen the four-way stop sign put in, I've not witnessed any accidents. If anybody has an accident down at the four-way intersection, it's because they don't understand the laws of the signs. I've had people approach me in the neighborhood that are against this sign, who have said to me that it causes a lot of confusion. Well, I don't know where they've gone to getting their driver's license, but it has rectified many of the accidents. I believe a lot of accidents occurred because they were speeding through those two lights, trying to beat. I personally have no objections to this sign being placed.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Bear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. I just want to make a comment. Back in August, my husband and I purchased eleven thirteen, and then in November, fifteen D. Laval. And we are actually neighbors to Insu, who just spoke a few minutes ago. And I want to keep our neighborly relationship, you know, in a good way. However, the one thing that I've noticed, and my husband, is that when Steve put the store there, before he went into that store, my husband actually went into the store before Steve purchased it, and he came out and he said, "This looks like a drug den in here." And we have watched Steve put nothing, nothing less than hundreds of thousands of dollars into that corner. And I have to disagree that it has hurt property values. If you know anything about real estate, everything that he has done on that corner has done nothing but improve everyone's property values a hundred percent. My husband and I have been involved in real estate since nineteen eighty-one. We've done over fifty properties in the city of Poughkeepsie. And so we're very familiar with what brings property values up and what brings property values down. He also has his real estate license. And, you know, the logistics of the sign, I will say, you know, that should be the decision of the board. You know, I don't have a problem with that sign. But what I want to bring to the attention is, is that property values have gone up, if anything, because of the investment that Steve put in there. If that building had not been purchased by him and done over, property values would continue to go down on that street. And so, you know, I just, I'm just here to, just to say my support for, you know, everything that he's done there. I know very few people who would invest that much money in that corner. I hope that he does get his return back someday. We've had many conversations, Steve and I, you know, about everything that is put in there.
Okay, I don't want to...
So that's all I have to say.
Interrupt, but the only question before us has to do with the sign.
Okay. So if it's...
And, you know, with the, the nature of the business or whatever is...
So if it's in accordance with...
That we have nothing to say about.
So as far as I'm concerned, if it's in accordance with the parameters of the town, then I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Lawrence Curry.
Mr. Curry, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, ma'am. I live on twenty-nine Marple Road, okay? The deli that used to be there, ABC Deli, I mean, it was, it was bad. I mean, you had riffraffing out of there, they had robberies. There was all kinds of trouble in the street, there were fights, everything else. This place, right, is absolutely gorgeous. All right, he should have a sign, right, so that people, right, know that the deli's there, all right? He serves breakfast, there's a lot of people, right, that stop there for breakfast and all.
Again, the issue is the location of the sign.
And I don't think there's a problem with the location of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've been a firefighter for twenty-six years, okay? It's not the sign that is the problem, it's just the drivers, right, that don't pay attention. The sign's not going to deter anybody from having an accident. If they're going to have an accident, right, they're doing it on their own fault, running red lights, trying to pass somebody. I believe, right, that there shouldn't be a problem with this gentleman having his sign put on his property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, yeah, there are two, two people, and I would, I would ask you to be brief and not repeat.
I'll need some patience, though. I'm Ann Dalton.
Ms. Dalton, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
It's difficult for me to get up and speak in public, recovering from someone running a red light on Grand at a different intersection. So I hope you'll be a little patient. I want to second strongly what neighbors Bob Hines, Cheryl Harrington, Amy Town, and Professor Finkel said at this, at the last meeting, and what was said by him tonight. I'm a long-term resident, and there's a history of bad accidents at the corner of North Grand and D. Laval. All the neighbors know it's a matter of when, not if, for the next one. People accelerate up the hill at Marple and run the light. I've seen a lot of accidents and people injured over the years at the corner in question. Putting an illuminated sign of that size... Putting an illuminated sign of that size right near the traffic light at De La Val and Grand will be very distracting for drivers. We would like to see the signage set back the required 10 feet in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood. We also value neighborly relations and want to be on cordial terms. We know Mr. Kumar has done a lot of work and we appreciate that very much. But for large trucks and buses especially coming through, a sign with a planter and plants and then a size of that magnitude near the intersection will dangerously cut down on visibility. This is especially bad because children are often walking and biking to that store. I have seen children hit at that intersection while walking, while on bikes, and in cars. Given these community detriment concerns, I think it outweighs the individual benefit to Mr. Kumar by a wide margin. I believe an alternate, I believe a, an alternative placement for the sign exists as, and the, you know, those of you have seen prior pictures know one possible place. I hope you'll weigh this concern and the fact that there is an alternative, one that's supported by many of the neighbors, and I ask that you deny this variance. Just as a final appeal, given that Mr. Kumar is calling his store the com, community deli, we hope he'll weigh the neighbors' concerns, who spoke last week and who spoke through the petition, and rethink his plan for the signage. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you. And yes, sir.
Yes. Peter Aiello.
Mr. Aiello, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. Um, basically, I'm here to say that I have no problem with the sign being placed where it is. People's irresponsible driving practices and other circumstances that happen on the road happened while there wasn't a sign there. So, I mean, we don't really know what the sign being there is gonna do or not do. Um, Mr. Kumar has gone out of his way to show everybody a level of decency that's come into that store. And I'm sure that he would not, it's not his intention at all to put anyone in danger. If this is something that can be done, then I believe it should be in any way, shape, or form that it will most likely help his business and continue to create a haven for people to go stop, have coffee, egg sandwiches, sodas, whatever they're looking to get at the store. I live in the neighborhood and I have frequented that store even when it was the other store. And what a difference. The lighting, the safeness, I don't feel in danger of walking out the front door and getting hit by a car trying to run through the glass window. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Um, yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. I'm, I'm also the other sign person on your agenda and the sign person is here. I realize it's later. Can we piggyback both sign issues at once as we're all talking?
No, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Yeah. At the, we, we, we have to decide on.
Have to try.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, I have six letters from neighbors who weren't able to come. I'm just going to give them if you can enter them into the record, all supporting the petition tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay. And.
Jim, at, at what point are we going to discuss the size of the sign?
Um, you can, you can raise that if you wish. I think.
But that's not what's on the agenda.
I can comment on what we discussed earlier. The prohibition on I-beams and steel poles is only four signs in the residential district. I looked them up while we were here. The sign for the, in this district, it simply says that it shall be on a, I believe, a monument base. Hold on. The base shall be mounted within a landscape monument for BN Zone signs, but it doesn't say anything pro or con about the pole that the sign sits on. 50 square feet is allowed and they are within, so they're within the sign requirements and height requirements.
Okay. Right. So I, I guess in answer to your, your question, Carmen, the, the, the sign that's being proposed is, is, is a good deal less than the, the maximum that's allowed. So it would be, it would be legal.
It, it would be legal.
Yeah.
Because, um, I, I think we had talked about the sign probably being somewhat large for, for location.
I think the sign, the cardboard, piece of cardboard that you had up there, was that the exact size of the sign?
Yes.
It was? Because it did look bigger, didn't it?
Yeah. I mean, it.
I, I understand. I, I realize that's not the issue tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, I guess we simply register it as an observation. We recognize, of course, that you're within the limits of the code.
Thank you.
But, but when we were out there, two or three people, myself included, kind of looked at it and said, hmm, it seems a little big. But whether, whether the applicant wishes to, you know, trim it down a little bit, you've already agreed that you're going to put it up a little bit higher. I think, you know, that, we, we can't require it, but maybe we would suggest.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right. Uh, okay. If we've covered everything, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number six, Duchess Golf and Country Club, 2628 South Road. My understanding is that the planning board is the lead agent.
Right. And we couldn't vote last month because they had not done seeker yet.
Have they completed that?
Yes.
Yes.
They have. Okay. All right. So, gentlemen, if you'd just each give your name, be sworn in, please.
Chris Laporta with the Chazen Companies.
Larry Boudreau with the Chazen Companies.
Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I help you God?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. Okay. So if you'd kind of briefly describe the project that you're here for.
Okay. We're here representing the Duchess Golf and Country Club. We were last here on June 13th and we presented an overview of the variance request. And the project is a 3,024 square foot ancillary clubhouse restaurant building or a raw bar. And it'll also include an outdoor wedding function area, parking improvements, some new ponds, landscaping improvements and renovations to an existing putting green. We received a negative declaration, seeker determination at the June 16th planning board meeting. And we're here tonight to answer any final questions you may have.
Okay. So, um, the, the specific variance you're looking for is to allow a one-story building to be set back 92 feet from the front property line where 200 feet is required.
Yes.
So could you, could you address why that variance should be granted?
Um, yes, I could go through the, our reasons for the appeal. So the, the existing clubhouse was granted a variance for 165 feet, as well as the pro shop was granted a variance for 142 feet. And the project is surrounded by a commercial area which has buildings ranging from 33 to 95-foot setbacks. Directly across the street is the Coyote Grill with a 55-foot setback. There's no residential uses adjacent to the project area. And the layout of the existing golf course really limits the area available for expansion and new structures. Going by a 200-foot setback would also require the construction of a new parking area.
We have a site plan if you want to see it.
Yeah, we, actually, it's, there's.
Okay.
I don't think it's the full site plan, but it's certain, well, it is a site plan.
We have a site plan, then we have an aerial with all the different adjacent setbacks, if you want to see it.
Yes, that's, that's part of the, part of the submission. I guess one, one question I had is, what is going to be in between the new building and Route 9?
The existing parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty much as it.
Yeah, where it exists at, I think, 55, 56 feet, we're going to widen it to meet code 62. And then 10 feet off of that, we'll begin the, the new building.
Okay.
There's also a stone wall along Route 9.
So, so pretty much what you see there now from Route 9 is what you'll see when the project's completed?
Yes.
Okay. Except probably a new.
Right.
The top of the new building.
Right, the top of it, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
No questions.
Art?
Two. How tall is the building going to be? To the top of the roof line roughly?
The architecture was done by LMV, Mike McCormick's team. I asked him to send us an elevation. He sent me that elevation, which was approved on, at the planning board meeting, June 16th, but it didn't have any dimensions on it. So I can take a guess, you know, eight feet, nine feet to the eve line, right? And then to the top of the roof, probably another.
But a, a one-story building?
Yes, one-story building.
And how low, below Route 9, does the property, because it falls off, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. So the finished floor is, just give me a second.
So essentially, you're not going to see a lot of this building because of the way the property falls off and the wall, correct?
Yeah, it'll be partially covered by the stone wall there. You'll see the top of the building and.
Right. Yeah, the, we, the finished floor.
This could probably correct me if I'm wrong. I believe they, they want people to, to be able to see this a little bit.
No, I understand that, but I mean, it's not going to be a big hulking.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right along Route 9.
Yeah. Right. So, so just to follow up, the finished floor of the proposed building is 175. The grade of Route 9, 179. And then there's a, he added a three-foot stone wall, so say it's 182, 183, which would put it maybe at the eve line of the building, you know, your line of sight, obviously, would be above that.
No signage on the roof line and no, there's no signs on it.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No question.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application for the Duchess Golf and Country Club? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Conrad Gesner, 684 Duchess Turnpike. This has already been adjourned.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Item number eight, Jack DiOdoardo. Oh, excuse me. I'm sure I massacred that name.
Jack DiOduardo.
Want to say it again?
Jack DiOduardo.
Mr. DiOduardo. No, I'm, I wouldn't, I couldn't hear. Wanted to say it right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay. Could you tell us a little bit about what you're proposing?
Um, my property is at the corner of Violet Avenue and Miller Place. And I'd like to extend my fence. There's an existing three-sections along Miller Place that's been there before I moved to, moved into the property. I'd like to extend it down to the, almost to the end of my house and over to the, to the house.
Okay. And you're proposing, is I, a six-foot, essentially wooden.
Yes.
Fence.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Paul, any questions? You're extending it along Miller Road, Street?
Yes.
Okay. It's not going to extend past what, what would be the front on Violet Avenue, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then it'll enclose the backyard?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a reason that three and a half feet isn't sufficient?
Um, since, since I, I live right off of Route 9G and there's a lot of foot traffic with the property across the street, I really was looking for an extra two and a half feet of privacy in the backyard, especially for people driving down, mostly for the people like across the street, Route 9G there, so.
Okay. That's it. Betty?
The, the fence is coming at, not quite to the front line of your house.
Right. I, I was going to have it cut off at the, where the chimney, there's a.
Right.
Right at the chimney. Right there.
Okay. That's the only question.
Okay. Art?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
In, in your application, you said one of the, one of the issues, you have a dog that you wanted to.
Right.
Protect. In terms of privacy and keeping the dog under control, um, why do you have to bring it so far along Miller?
Um, the, there's the, uh, there's an existing place to park a car and a really large pine tree. And to, to bring it, say, to the edge of the back of the house from, from Violet Avenue, it would, it would be like, it would be, it would be difficult because of the large tree and it would be cutting right through the, the parking spot that's shown on the survey is actually back a little farther. And the fence would pretty much go right, right through that parking space. So I could, I could move it closer, farther away from Route 9 after the parking space. That, that would, I think that would look decent.
The, the zoning staff have looked at this and they have some problems with it. And, and the, the main problem that we have with these six-foot-high fences is when they extend, you know, for a considerable distance, you, you get this wall, you know, the kind of, you know, fortress effect. you know, fortress effect. Now, you're proposing a wooden fence that will, that will age and, 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 you know, be, won't be quite so imposing, but I, I guess, you know, the, and, and you have the situation where you're on a corner, so technically you have two front yards. But to try to reduce the kind of, you know, massiveness of the, so that's why I was wondering, you know, is there any flexibility here in terms of...
I, I could, I could move it back if, if, like, back away from Route 9G to, say, the back of my house. It may be, it may be cutting through, I'd have to, it might not be able to go directly across because of the tree and the, the cement, the macadam parking spot.
Hmm.
But I could, I could, I could, I could make it so it doesn't go as far.
Okay, well, Larry, any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Carmen?
Uh, and part, part of the reason for the fence is, is to keep the, the dog inside, right?
Yes.
Enclosed. And, um...
Yeah.
So, so this fence means that the dog would, would be able to roam anywhere in your yard?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my next question is, again, I have some objections to, to the height of the fence and that's a lot of fence that you have. The, the good news is that it's a kind of a natural color and, and that, that helps, but, um, is, is there a possibility to, in certain areas that you feel that you need the six feet, but it could be graduated lower in other, in other parts of the yard?
Um, for right now, there, there's a, there's a six-foot all, all across the back of the yard and, um, I, to, to go across the, for Miller Place to, say, especially the front by Route 9G, I guess I could if I, if I had to, you know, make, make it lower. But like I said, there's a lot of foot traffic on 9G across the street. There's always people out there smoking and it's always a different group of people. And, you know, I really, it, it, I think that the six-foot fence would sort of match the existing, what's already there as well.
Tim?
Yeah.
Two questions.
Yeah, sure.
Excuse me. First question is, are you trying to protect your parking area as well?
No, I'm not, no.
Would you be adverse to if, if, if it was suggested that the top of the fence be the, the wood with the lattice to let some visibility in? You know, you know the ones I mean? Same type fence, but it's got a little bit of lattice on the top. Probably, probably about the same cost, I guess.
Okay, I'd have to, I could, I could look into that. I'm not quite sure exactly what, what the lattice would look like.
Well, it would reduce, yeah, it would reduce the stockade effect because you would have, like, you know, be able to see through the top. 10 inches, I think it is, or something like that, eight inches.
Okay, yeah, I could work. Would it, would it be, do they offer that in, in wood-type fencing? Yeah?
I believe so, yes. We've had other people use that fencing.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, that's, that's one thing they've done.
Much nicer look for observers.
Brian from the, the planning and zoning came up with this proposal and tried this out. I mean, what if, what if the fence went along Miller until it was just before that pine tree and then cut over and intersected the, the house?
He offered that, I think.
In, in other words, leaving the, the gravel area and the pine tree on the outside of the fence.
So, so the fence would go between the gravel area and the pine tree?
Come on up here, look at this.
Or before the pine tree?
Yeah, yeah.
Come on up here.
He, he essentially looked, took your drawing and...
Yeah, that, that, I could, that would be fine.
Okay. So, so in effect, what he's, what he's proposing, the board knows, if, if you, if you go to the corner of the house nearest his deck...
Where the utility wires come in?
Yeah, yep. And then essentially go just a, a, a little bit to the back and then right across to the, where he's proposing the fence. So that there'd be a, the parking area and the pine tree would stay there, but that would reduce quite a bit and would, so you don't get that tunnel effect when you're looking down Miller.
Right, okay.
Um, was, is that, people okay with that?
That looks, that sounds good.
Yeah, in other words, yeah. In other words, go up here a little bit and then go across.
And then grab...
And it would be, it would be located so that you wouldn't get into the pine tree.
Okay.
So probably a couple of...
Right, it would go a foot or two before the pine tree to the house and then over?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then looking, going down 9G, looking that way, you would see the pine tree before you would notice the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, that would sort of, it provides some screening. Um, does...
Still have access without putting a gate into the driveway?
Um...
Miller, still have access to that?
Right, I was, I was planning to put a gate there on the other side of, of the tree.
Yeah.
And I was actually looking to, to get those large pine trees cut down, so I don't know if that would change anything. How was those, uh...
Um, well, I mean, that, you know, I think that's, that's up to you.
Good luck.
Okay, I didn't know if that would change, okay, okay.
Um, the reason, the reason I said that was, you know, I assumed if the pine tree stayed there, you'd want to, you'd want to go a couple of feet beyond it so that you don't, the, the fence and the pine tree don't get in each other's way.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, is that, is everybody okay with that?
Good with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, and I will, I will give you my copy of what we've agreed on. Just, um, so it's...
Yep.
And then it's located wherever you need to, to, so that you don't get, you know, the posts get into the tree roots and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application as amended at 319 Violet Avenue? Okay. Uh, are there any other questions from the board? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine, Michael and Helen Tosh, 60 in Pi Lane.
I have some pictures. Should I start to circulate them?
Yeah, why don't you just...
They're taken.
Yep, just, and we'll, we'll move them around.
And they were taken in March, between March and November.
Okay. Okay, and your name is?
Helen Tosh.
Ms. Tosh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, you want to, you also want to put up a six-foot fence, okay? Could you tell us why?
Okay, basically, thank you for this opportunity. I've never done anything like this before. I'm glad I live on a cul-de-sac after hearing everything that came before me. Every year, my husband and I, we've lived in the house for 30 years and every year we've lived there, we've made an improvement on the house and this year is no different than any other year. I think pictures are worth a thousand words and if you look at the last picture that's being circulated, you will see a fence, this is what the fence will look like that we want to put up. It's active yards, it's a vinyl fence, it should, it'll outlive me, I'm sure, unless a tree takes it out. Now, I'd like you to look, if you would, next at your surveyor's map. I believe you all have one and it shows the word to your left, Pi Lane. And where we're looking to put the six-foot fence is, you'll see it says driveway and then north of that driveway on the map, there's like, it's got 210, I believe that's the footage for the whole property line. The, actually, the picture that you're looking at on the back is six-foot high. My property is like, our property is a very large piece of, of land. It's, for us, it's large. The reason that I'd like it to be six feet consistently down, I, I understand that there's a certain section where I could have it six feet, for example, across from the garage doors on the house, which were on the curve of the driveway. There's a section there where I'm allowed it to be six feet and it would hide a lot of what you're looking at on those pictures that five months out of the year, it looks terrible and I'm, I'm trying to improve how my property, how our property looks. So, um, on, on the pictures, there is a stump where my neighbor had taken down a tree and your three and a half foot high rule is in that section where her stump is. And I believe that stump is four and a half to, it's, it's higher than three and a half feet. So the three and a half feet rule at that point would not buy me anything. It's, I'm still going to see what I don't want to look at. So I'm, I'm asking for a variance for six-foot high to be consistent all the way down and it will be consistent with what is, was erected on our property in another area. We do have down in the back, I'll just mention that, but we already, years ago, it was 1998, we had a chain link fence put up, which is also six feet high. So, um, I know a couple of you have been out to look. I don't know that you looked at the whole property because it looks completely different when it's all grown up. So, and actually, one of the pictures, you're looking down my sidewalk and you're looking at something that I've removed already, they were overgrown for cythia bushes. So that looks a little bit different right now, but I would put trees up, excepting, I know the great expense that's incurred by maintaining trees. Every year, branches come down, every year I have someone come and cleaning up trees and, and stuff for us. We have put a great deal of money into the cost of maintaining the property. So I've spoken with the other owner on that, this, the pictures are that you're looking at, it's her property, where basically she's drawn back her fence and left this area that you see in those pictures with brush and trees that aren't completely to the ground. The wildlife love it back there and I don't want to disturb them, but I'm looking for consistency in the fence to, as you look at it, to come, come down the line, all the way down. Now, my husband and I are not exactly sure. Our neighbor would like us to go right to the point on their circle by closest to where it says Pi Lane, but we are in kind of an agreement where we would stop where the, just past that stump, going toward the street, there's a, there's grass and then there's, I have forcythia that I need to trim back again, but we're going to not go all the way to that pin, but we'd like to have that as an option if possible. But my thinking right now is for us, we would just go to definitely hide that stump. And I would put trees up, but her trees are so tall. I've never seen trees this tall in my life until I got this property. They're very tall and they block the sun, so I actually had planted two evergreen, three evergreen trees we planted and the backsides of them are like barren because they're being blocked, the sun can't get to them, so I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Paul?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
No. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
I have a question.
Yeah, okay, sure, no problem.
Okay. Um, you're requesting a, a six-foot fence?
Correct, yes, vinyl.
And you mentioned that the stump was a, a real problem.
It's on my neighbor's property, correct?
Right, and how, and how high is the stump?
It's, it's higher than three and a half feet. I measured it in March and I, it's either four and a half or five feet high. It's in the picture, the third picture I sent around, they're probably all out of order now. You can actually see the stump that I would like to hide.
Now, everything I see in the picture basically is brush and...
Yeah, trees, there's down trees.
And down trees, that, that sort of thing. I mean, there's, there's not rust, that sort of thing, right?
It's not, it's not, no, it's not like household garbage, no.
No, no.
We've had several storms come through our area over the past several years that have taken, unfortunately taken down a lot of, we have a beautiful oak tree on, on our property and it's, it took down, brought down our wires, major branches come down and her area in particular on her property in the back got hit from the, the storm. The wind took a lot of things down and it is very costly to maintain. So my criticism's not with her, mine is to improve my property, especially I, when I come out my front door, I want to improve that one section where you come down my walk. Now, I believe that section is within my right to have six feet there, but I don't, like I said, I would like it to be consistent all the way down and I like the fence. If you look at that picture, I'm not putting up a cheap fence. It's not wood, it's vinyl. It should last, it has a mechanism in the bottom of it that's a metal where they snap things into it. It should, it'll...
And what color is it?
It's sand. Is there a picture anywhere where she can see, it was the last picture I sent around?
Right.
She can see the color of it.
I, I still question...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, whether a six-foot fence to, to camouflage or, or, or shield you from, from the neighbor's brush and, and down trees, I, I, I just question whether that's necessary and...
Okay, and you have a right to your opinion.
Well, I certainly do.
Yes, you do.
You're right.
And I'm at your, I'm at your mercy. Have you looked at all the pictures? That's all I ask.
Yes, I have and I, and I've been out to the property and...
Oh, you did, you were out, I didn't know that. Okay, I didn't see it.
Yes, and we were out there last week.
Okay.
I, I just, um, I, I think the three and a half or, or four-foot fence would be sufficient and I, I think you would find that a big improvement as well.
Well, my, my personal opinion is, as homeowners, we've lived in the town of Poughkeepsie for almost 40 years and, and our other home that we owned as well, we make improvements every year and my personal feeling is that a three and a half foot, I, I wouldn't put up a three and a half foot high fence. That's my personal opinion, that I would definitely just leave it as it is if the board, that's, I can, I only have to be honest. This is something I've thought a lot about, I've looked at it. Last year, I started looking into fencing and it's very, very costly. Hurt, the tree line right now has a lot of maple trees, young saplings that are on her property. She's a retired lady, she doesn't live in the home, she has renters and she's not maintaining it and over, as time goes on, they will become a problem that I, actually, right now, if you stood under, by my mailbox and looked at her evergreen tree, there's a dead branch up there right now, right, waiting to fall down on someone and I have no way of getting that down. I have to hire someone. It affects me, it doesn't affect her. So I'm hoping by having a fence that it will keep this stuff out, it's, I'm, I'm just at your mercy, whatever you decide's fine.
Right, and, and one thing about the stump, the stump... And, and one thing about the stump, the stump isn't going to grow, is it?
No.
Okay.
It's not the only thing there that I dislike. I dislike looking at all, all of it, all the brush and everything. It looks like a neighborhood place where people have dumped their shrubs. That's, I can't prove that. I have no criticism, I don't know the lady, why, she's retired, I'm retired. I'm 70 years old. This fence will outlive me, definitely, unless a tree comes down on it. So, I hope I've answered your question. I stated how I feel, that's it.
You certainly have answered my questions.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 16 Pi Lane? Okay, hearing done. There are no other comments from the board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Item 10, Samuel and Kathy Sylvester, 19 Lakeview Avenue. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
If you'd both just state your names and then be sworn in.
Yes, Kathy Sylvester.
Sam Sylvester.
Sam Sylvester and Kathy Sylvester, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statement made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes.
Okay, so if you'd just tell us why you would like a variance.
Okay, well, currently, I'm, the photographs, I'm sure you'll have a copy of all the photographs. The house was built in 1951, and with that, it was a one-car garage, and we measured the driveway, it's only nine feet in width. And we need to be able to widen the driveway, and I know the, the current requirement is 15 feet, but however, 17 and a half feet aesthetically in the pictures would allow the driveway to come even-
The corner of the house, to make it look nice.
The corner of the house. So, aesthetically, from the street, it would just look, look nicer. And it would also accommodate the cars that we need that park in that driveway. You know, it-
Tenants can park side by side.
We have, currently, the house is rented by Marist graduate students, so we need to be able to accommodate parking for them to be in compliance with the regulations about not parking on the street or on the grass. And by having a driveway 17 and a half feet, it would allow cars to park like two by two, to allow for that. And we did look at other neighbors and their driveways. On the north side of our house, their driveway's 21 feet in width.
And on the south side's also 21?
21 feet.
Okay. Paul?
How many rental spaces do you have in the apartment?
There's four, currently, four, there's four bedrooms, so there's four tenants.
Okay, that was it?
Okay, thank you.
Betty?
When you say the end of the house, are you talking about the outs, the outside corner of the garage?
Okay, um, if you-
Or are you going to move it to the right?
Okay.
Past the breezeway?
Are you looking at the, the top picture here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We would not be extending the driveway any further on the south side. We'd be extending it toward the breezeway where, like, the garbage cans are. So, it would come to just that corner of the house.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
Thank you.
All right.
And you want this to come all the way out to the road, right? You don't just want to-
Yes, we would like to have it go all the way out to the, to the street, the same width.
Yeah, you already got people parking on the front lawn, right?
Well, that's why we're trying to not have that happen anymore.
We're from Marlboro, so we can always keep a watch of where the tenants will park.
They are.
So.
And you say you're maxed out at four people in this home?
Yes. That's all that we're allowed, that's, that's all we're allowing to live there, because there are four bedrooms.
No further questions.
Okay. I mean, it, according to the diagram that you've got here, that it, the distance from the street to the garage is 68 feet.
You could answer that because you-
Oh, okay.
Because he's the one who drew the diagram.
Oh, yeah, that goes right to the street.
Yeah.
He used one of his hardware extension-
Yeah, okay. But the, the reason I bring that up is that if you, if you park cars two by two, boy, you, you, you know, in 68 feet, let's see, what's the-
I know.
The length of-
It could be accommodating to the tenants. The only problem is, is that they don't like to do the shuffle. That's what it's all about. They want to make it easy.
They come and go at various times because of their work and schedules, so-
But they're still going to have to shuffle for two by two.
Yeah.
No way around, shuffle.
The shuffling two by two is easier than shuffling one by four.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I understand that. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 19 Lakeview Avenue? Seeing none. Any question, other questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, Paula Young Bora, 2186 New Hackensack Road. All right, let's see. So, if you'd both state your name, but I think only you have to be sworn in, he's already.
My name is Paula Young Bora.
Bora, thank you.
Paula Young Bora, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I affirm to, yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so this concerns a sign variance, so if you'd explain why you need the variances.
I recently bought the former Mulligan's Bar, and there was a Big Shamrock with neon, and the Mulligan family wanted to take it with them. And that's not my surname, so I figured perhaps I should just call it something else. And I approached several sign makers, all of which were wonderful, but I thought that the work done by sign language was preferable to what I was looking for. And we together came up with a sign that I thought was elegant, not intrusive, and would suit the place.
Okay. Before we go too much further, I, I need to read into the record a letter from the county Department of Planning and Development to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's dated July 11, 2016. The Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the subject referral within the framework of general municipal law. After considering the proposed action in the context of countywide and intermunicipal factors, the department finds that the board's decision involves a matter of some concern. Action. The applicant is seeking an area variance to allow a freestanding sign 24 square feet in size and 11.5 feet in height, supported by a single steel beam where a freestanding sign shall not exceed four square feet in air, in size, eight feet in height, or utilize an exposed I-beam. The property is located within the single-family residence R to 20,000 district. Comments. While we are not opposed to a freestanding sign of 24 square feet at this location, we suggest the sign be designed to better reflect the intent of the town's sign standards as expressed in the code, as well as respect for residents, neighbors, and the district. We are pleased to see the sign's face proposed as white lettering on a black background, which would limit light pollution and increase readability. These positive design features could be retained in a lower monument-style sign with a landscape base. We suggest that the current I-beam could be reduced in size and wrapped in materials such as brick, stone, or wood. Recommendation. For the reasons stated above, our department recommends that the board not grant the requested variances until the following conditions are met. One, the sign be reduced to no more than eight feet in height, as permitted by code. And two, the exposed I-beam be integrated into a monument-style base. Voting and reporting requirements. If the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires that it do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board, and that it notify us of the reasons for its decision. Signed, Brian Keough and Owen Rafter of the County of Dutchess.
May I ask why I did not receive and was not CC'd on that correspondence?
We just got it.
It came in about 4:30 today.
Those sneaky rats. The post that was there was rusted and hideous, with, in my opinion. The sign that was there was quite an eyesore. We have lowered the top portion of the post by, how many feet?
Probably about two or three.
Two or three feet. And we've scraped it and painted it, and I don't know if you've driven past, but we've done some lovely plantings. And certainly, the only neighbor I have is a gentleman across the street who daily comes over and thanks me and says that it's no longer an eyesore. And the house directly next door is owned by the former owners of Mulligan's, and it is an empty rental property. I have spent so much money already. To have to wrap that post is going to just cost me more money that I don't have.
Do you need it up on a post? I mean-
I wanted a smaller sign, and so we came up with a smaller sign. I wanted something that isn't going to grab people's eyes away from that very quick-moving street. I would actually ask you guys to put a stop sign there or a light, but that's another agenda. And I, I'm very concerned about people crossing, animals, it's very fast-moving. But we, the sign person I defer to, we felt that this was the least obnoxious choice.
A lower-style monument sign with patrons, it, maybe somebody might want to mess with the sign as, like, the community deli, it's up high enough where, you know, you're not going to be able to mess with it. Also, maybe visibility reasons, because it's so low, it may deter a little bit of visibility issues. We are looking to keep it on the same pole, so keeping it up at the, the lowered height that we, the original sign was at just seemed to make the most sense.
We did lower it.
So, the total height right now is what?
It's showing on the proposal 133 inches, which I, yeah, just-
Just over 11 feet.
Yeah, just about 11.
Okay.
So, the bottom of the sign is how high, if a person were to reach up to touch it?
Oh, it's the same thing as the other signs.
Okay.
Like seven feet.
I didn't want it to look like a Sunoco sign on the highway, and I, because I hate those big, tall signs. So, we thought this would be a solution.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
Well, is it possible, or how difficult would it be to bring it to eight feet?
Well, I mean, I can bring it to two feet, you know, I can make it any size you like. It's just a matter of whether the functionality is there.
Okay. Well, do you have some benefit, 11 and a half feet? That's-
The only thing is, if you bring it down, I mean, you have four feet from the ground, it's just going to look strange, you know, this type, this style of a sign, it's just not going to look right.
Okay.
I'm also concerned cars, I'm doing everything I can to prevent any kind of disorderly conduct at my bar. I owned a wine bar in Fishkill, and there was no disorderly conduct, no swearing, and there will not be at this place either. And I will not-
No swearing?
Nope, have a square jar, sorry. No swearing during drinking. My concern is, as he pointed out, I don't know the sort of folks that were at Mulligan's, but I was told that there were occasionally some misbehaving adults.
As a matter of fact, there were.
And so-
You know that.
I'm taking a good place, yes, there were.
So, it was his suggestion that we don't put it at a height that someone could hit it, kick it. That's why it's a bit high.
So, my concern is that a monument, I think, would really interfere with, when I pulled out of your parking garage next to where the sign would be, I think a monument sign would interfere with the line of sight going up the road. So, is there a way, are you in a rush to put the sign up?
I'm, right now, realize today that the bar itself has been, was an oak bar that they then put pine on, that they then painted with patio paint. But when the gentleman came to put a granite bar on, he showed me that the entire bar is a skinny piece of plywood, and the bar is just sitting in the middle of it. So, we're going to have to take that whole actual bar away. So, probably, I'm two weeks later than I need to be. So, no, I have probably got a two-week window.
If you were to do a mock-up, that'd be a big problem?
To actually build a, like-
Something different than what happened at De La Valle, but something-
It gets costly, believe it or not. I mean, because if I had to mock it up, I have to make it so it's structurally sound to withstand wind loads. And when you get a sign that is four foot by seven foot, I have to make that so-
Just make a cardboard box that goes on top of the pole from when we're there?
Well, I can do, yeah, exactly what I did on the other location.
How much is that going to cost?
It's, I believe it's the same, same size, I could use the same cardboard.
Ooh-hoo.
One of the things that the board doesn't have before right now also that would be helpful, and maybe you can tell us, there's a marking for a curb on this sign, is that the edge of the road, is that the edge of the property? We don't know where this sign sits on the property.
I have the dimension, six feet from the outer edge of the curb to the center of the pole.
And the outer edge of the curb is on-
Then there's the roadway.
Well, then-
Past the roadway?
Yeah, there's the roadway.
Okay.
Well, there's a shoulder and then the roadway.
Yeah, there's quite a bit, yeah.
And it's a pole, it's not an I-beam.
It's a round pole.
It's a round pole, which we've painted, scraped, and painted black.
Yeah. So, the prohibition is on I-beams, right?
No.
Poles too?
Yeah, and, but, the difference is that De La Valle was, is zoned-
Being-
Neighborhood business.
Is it residential, right?
And I was, I was actually a little surprised when I, I in fact double-checked with the zoning map to find that the Mulligan's is, is zoned residential.
Oh, yeah.
And it, the most unlikely residential lot that I can think of, but-
The prohibition-
That's what it is. And the, and the prohibition on I-beams applies only to residential.
Right.
It's I-beams and also steel beams.
Yeah.
Steel beans?
I wouldn't say this is a beam, this is actually a pole.
It's a pole, yeah. Maybe. I think a pole is different than a bean.
Okay. I, I don't have, I don't have any problem with a variance for the type of-
Okay.
-support, that, but, okay.
Okay. So, if we could see the difference between 11 and a half and eight feet, I think that would have a better explanation if we, if we intended to override the county's recommendation.
Could I just show that in the presentation, or it has to be-
Well, I really want to see the effect on the roadway and the traffic in the line of sight, is really what I would be concerned about.
My concern would be that also. I think that in one way, having it a bit higher up, then you're not going to interfere with people driving past.
That could be, but I would like to see just so I'm comfortable.
No, I agree, I'm agreeing.
Yeah, so, so, Paul, your suggestion is that we set up our next field trip or some time, when we could go, and you could have the cardboard and, you know, as you did at De La Valle, say, okay, here's, here's eight feet, here's 11 feet, and we can stand and look up and down. I, I think, I, I very much agree with Paul on this. I think this would allow us to address the, the specific issues that the county raises in, and we, and we have to respond, so.
That's going to put you in a time crunch? Will that put you in a time crunch about when you want to open?
I want to open in August, end of August.
End of August?
End of August, so not, we, like I said, and now with this- End of August. So not, like I said, and now with this, the two-week with the bar. My concerns are, though, that for 47 years plus, this carried on, and no one said boo. No one said boo. And all I've done is improve it. Currently, my parking lot is the urinal for everyone's dog, everyone's bladder, everyone who wants to take a nap, the cars that want to make illegal and very fast U-turns. It's awful, and yet I don't feel I'm being given any kind of...
I don't, I don't have any doubt about how you're going to improve that area. And I support it completely, and I look forward to going there and having something good to eat and a beverage. But the town code on signs, very, and this is, by the way, spelled out in the staff report, very clearly says that when an existing sign, that when an existing business ceases, then any variances for the signs expire. And we have to start over again, and we have to start over again with the current zoning, which is the residential. So, you know, in effect, what, what we need to do is to figure out a way that's gonna allow you to put up a sign, a sign that's gonna work for you and work for the business, that is essentially the, the least in violation of the code.
I need to use...
And so, I think that's, that's the, that's the goal here. So, and, and by the way, the, the staff report, taking into all these things into concern, also recommends that the current proposal be denied. So we, I think we need to figure out a way of modifying or at least seeing why the current proposal is, in fact, kind of the only reasonable alternative for you to pursue. And on that basis, we can grant a variance.
Does anyone have any suggestions on what kind of sign would work?
Well, it says here, it says here that a non-conforming sign that is no longer valid has to be replaced with a conforming sign.
Right. So that would be one that was four square feet and eight feet from the ground. So we were pretty clear that...
Four square and eight. Okay.
That's probably not going to be successful for you. So that's why we want to see something that you're proposing and to compare it with something that the county would accept. And if we are comfortable in what you propose, we can override the county's recommendations.
Yes.
One more thing. What about if I scrapped the pole, grow some, something up it, some trumpet vine, and just leave the pole, and then just put my sign on top of my roof?
Roof signs are prohibited.
Off the front of the building. You could hang it.
You could hang it.
If I, if I erected it on the roof?
No, you can't.
I can't...
No, you can't have a roof sign.
No.
No roof sign. Even if it's laying on the roof? No. Okay.
No.
I'm just trying to come up with creative ideas.
You could put something in the window, I think.
My window is very small. I wasn't allowed to change the front of the building.
I don't think that you have a bad choice here. It's just that we want to see it to be able to...
Absolutely.
Okay. Approve it.
Okay.
Right. And I, and I think everybody agrees that the design is attractive and effective. I think the county made a point of saying, don't, you know, they like the design. It's now just kind of how we...
Center of height.
Mount it, yeah.
Sure.
So our, our field trip, next field trip is, would be August 3. And we could, if it, if it works for you, we could just say we'll be there at 1 o'clock and...
Yeah, the last one actually was smack dab in the middle of my day, and that's kind of hard to work around. If we could do it in the morning or later towards evening, if that would be okay with the board?
You don't make weekend field trips if I give you sandwiches and stuff.
Ooh, things like that.
All say.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You didn't hear that?
Unfortunately, we can't, we can't do that. But...
If one, if one, in the afternoon, if that's the best, I will, I'll work around that. Absolutely.
Well, that's, the problem is...
Your field trip lasts longer, right?
Yeah, that's the only time that we know specifically that we can be there, because we never know how long the field trip will be or where we're going to be at any given time, except the beginning.
Okay.
In the morning.
Oh, any, I just didn't want to, like, kind of split my day, because sometimes I go out on the road, and then I have to, like, actually, I was a little bit late for the last one, because I was out in Dover installing signs.
Yeah.
And I had to run back. And I, just splitting my day like that is a little bit difficult sometimes. But I can, I'll certainly make sure that I get there at 1.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, two things. I could do it in the morning if I had to, but we have also in the past rarely made a special trip. I mean, we've done it. It's not unheard of.
Yeah. No, yeah, we have. We have.
I don't want to change it if it, if it's gonna be any kind of issue.
I mean, are, how flexible are people's schedules?
I'm flexible. I can...
I'm flexible.
I need enough advanced time. If it was, it was an early morning, I just needed enough advanced time so I can block out my...
I'm ready to block it out right now.
I mean, say, what, 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock's perfect.
Well, we could do 9.
Let's, let's do 9.
Okay.
We'll, we'll bring some cameras. We'll take pictures. If people can't make it, at least we'll have that. So...
August 3?
9 o'clock, 9 a.m. on Wednesday, August 3.
You know, this is the entire field trip, right?
Sandy, you have to remind us.
On the whole route, right?
We certainly can.
Might as well. Right.
Oh, yeah.
Might as well.
Be sure.
Might as well. Okay. Yeah. So...
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, no, thank you. I think, I think this will be a big help. Okay, just, okay. Betty, do you have any questions?
No, I'll, I'll go with this.
All right. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Perriman? Anyone in the audience wish...
The applicant has some...
Address the application, 2186 New Hackensack Road. Yes.
I'm sorry. One more query.
Sure.
How soon after you do your field trip will we have a determination?
The probably...
Following Monday.
The following Monday.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, August 8.
I guess you have time, right?
Okay. All right. Okay, there's no one in the audience that I'm seeing, so is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing for item 11? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, appoozles? So we will see you on...
Thank you very, very much, Alvin.
August 3. Okay. And good luck with the renovations.
Thank you. Stop by.
Okay.
Item 12. Mohinder Mangat, 47 sites terrace. Good evening, sir.
Mohinder Mangat.
Mr. Mangat, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. And according to the application, you want to, is it a new deck or are you replacing a deck?
A new deck.
New deck. Okay. And why do you need a variance for that?
The reason is that I'm 12 feet from my neighbor's property, and it should be 20 feet.
Okay.
And the sec, the main reason I'm doing it, right behind the house, like 10-foot area is below my backyard. It's like two feet lower than the rest of the backyard. So that will make it look better, and it can be more useful, because the house is very small. So that's the main reason I'm doing it.
Okay. And on the diagram, on the, on the side of the house, you say there's nine feet from the property line.
Yeah, from the deck is 12 feet, but on, there is a side entrance to the kitchen, and from there, it will be only nine.
Okay. So, so that three feet is a, is an entryway?
Right. Right now, it's masonry steps, but it will be covered with the deck. So it will be like same level as the deck.
Okay. So the, the entryway and the new deck will be connected?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Paul?
Did you say that, that was going to be covered by the deck or become part of the deck? The side, the side there, what, it's just going to be the same level? Is that what you said, or did you say?
No, the, right from the side entrance?
Yes.
It will be same level going up to the deck, and then it will be one step.
One step up to the deck.
It will be two feet high.
Okay. Are you gonna, it's existing. Are you gonna change that or add to that concrete?
I will be putting over, and that three-foot area by three by eight, it will be over the masonry.
He's gonna deck over.
So the deck is gonna go over that masonry?
Exactly.
Over this.
How far? Just that little corner there, or how much of it?
Just that corner.
Okay. Okay. So is the deck going to be any closer than 12 feet from the sideline?
I just took a picture of it.
Right. So you're not changing that entranceway. Okay. But is the deck wrapping around the house?
No, just along the back.
Just along the back? Okay.
16 feet from the house and 10 feet.
Paul, are you concerned with the fact that it should be a variance for nine feet, not 12?
No. Not unless he's changing that, unless he's adding something to it.
Well, if it's gonna be connected, if the walkway is gonna be the track and it's gonna be connected to the deck, does that make the variance required for nine feet?
Does.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out, whether he's connecting it or it's just staying the way it is.
I'm getting the impression that you're, you're gonna, you're gonna build a new walkway over the top of the concrete walkway with the same materials that the deck is gonna be made of, and then from that walkway, they're gonna, you're gonna go onto the deck.
Need the variance anyway.
Variance should be for nine feet, not 12.
This is the idiot.
Yeah, but his picture is different than what he's saying. So I want to be clear about exactly what he wants to do.
Yeah, they'll need nine feet.
So nine feet? That's too bad.
That area that's nine feet by three feet, is that going to be raised off the ground, or is it going to stay at ground level?
It will be raised like, I will say, six to seven inches from the masonry.
All right. And so the deck is, the deck is not going to be 12 feet from the sideline? It's gonna be nine feet from the side?
From the deck, it will be 12, because it will be right behind the house.
Is it extending past the house?
Second?
Is it extending past the house?
No.
Then I don't really understand what you're talking about. The concrete that you have, the entranceway to the side of the house?
Right.
Are you in any way changing that?
No, I'm putting wooden deck over, like a walkway.
That sounds like you're changing it. You're adding something to the concrete that's there?
I'm putting over in that area, like three-foot area.
Okay. All right. Then I think he needs a greater variance.
We'll have to re-advertise that.
Okay. Now, counselor, is that, that your, your reading of this?
Technically, you should have, it would be different if it were a lesser variance as opposed to a greater variance. However, since the application, I had the same question about the nine-foot versus the three-foot and what that was, whether it was existing or shown. And it's not entirely clear from the materials.
Slab, right?
Right. He keeps saying that he's gonna put something over top of it.
Yeah. You'd be better off just putting some steps on the other side.
I can't think about doing just the deck and leave that missing.
Well, if there's steps, steps aren't gonna count, right?
Right.
Right.
What we could do, since the deck area has been advertised improperly so, is if the board were inclined to grant the variance, they could grant it for the portion only shown as new deck. And then the applicant could decide, and in consultation with the staff tomorrow, whether he wanted to do stairs or he wanted to do his original plan of decking in that nine by three. No, it's not nine, whatever the...
Well, let me, let me just clarify. This, on your drawing, you have the new deck, you have the three-foot slab. Is that just a step coming down from the new deck onto the slab?
That is already existing. That's missing.
The slab is there. That's right. Then you want to build a new deck.
Right.
From the new deck to the existing slab, is that just a step? You, on your diet, why don't you come up here a second if you don't mind?
It's going to be connecting.
Exactly.
It's what?
It's gonna be connecting.
It, well...
The applicant testified that he was going to put tracks over the entire slab that's there?
Just that three-foot area when you come out.
But the entire three-foot concrete slab, your plan is to put tracks on top of that?
Yes. If that's a problem, I can go without it. Just do the deck part.
Well, yeah, it, it, it sounds like it is a problem.
I see.
Then I can skip that. Just ignore that nine by three feet area. Then I can do just the deck.
Works for me.
Okay.
That works, because he's not making any to that, to that area.
All right. Then I don't have any more questions.
Are you looking at the map?
Yeah. So, so I guess it comes down to this. If, if we approve the current application, you'll be able to put up the new deck, but only the new deck.
That's fine.
And, but if you decide that, or if you're, if you think that in the future, you may want to connect the deck and this side slab, then you would have to reapply for another variance, pay the fee.
No, I'd be happy with just the deck part.
Okay. How are you gonna get from this?
Your map, it says new deck. So in your application, you note new deck, but nothing here. So we just thought that was an existing, which it is a walk, right?
It is masonry.
Yes, yes.
So if I get approval for deck only?
You'll get approval for this deck only, as you applied for.
Right.
If you, in the future, if you want to improve this walkway or attach that walkway to the deck?
Right.
Right. But how is he gonna get from the walkway to the deck? There's no...
It will be one step, actually. You have to...
But, but steps don't count.
That's if, but is he building a step or is he gonna leave it?
He can put in the step.
He can put a step in, yeah.
It have to be at least one step, because it's gonna be two feet high.
Except that I don't recall that slab extending past the house.
It goes up to the house, up to the end of.
Okay. So you're not gonna be able to get from the slab to the deck without, you're gonna have to step down onto the lawn and then step up onto the deck?
Yeah.
When do you plan on doing this?
I, I just want to, you know...
How soon, how soon will you plan on?
I want to do it that.
Okay. I don't, will the building department allow, I mean, sign off on when you have to leap down and jump up onto a deck?
I'm not sure, but I know that it's gonna take them to review the plans, then get out there at least one week, then look at the, they'll go out there, they'll tell them and look at the stonotubes. Are you gonna put stonotube in?
Second?
You know what stonotube is?
It's all rock. I don't know what he's gonna...
Yeah. You, guess what? You're gonna have to put that down for, for a deck. The building department's gonna make you do that. So where the post's supporting your deck, it has to sit on top of stonotube, which is, I don't know, a forming material? Or maybe Steve in the back could tell us.
Concrete.
But something like that, right, Steve? And that sits on top of that cement?
Is, is there gonna be an entrance onto the deck from the house?
Second? No, there's no, there's nothing.
Can you get to the deck from the house? Is there a slider or...
No, I have to use that back door.
Sounds like he's gonna, we're gonna be back here looking at a nine-foot variance. You know, why go through it twice? It seems like the, the best thing to do would be look for that nine-foot variance and make it cohesive like he's thinking in his mind he'd like to do. This way, you don't have to do it twice, because you're not gonna...
Because it's not gonna be a step. It's actually, he's gonna wrap around.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think for what you want to do, we should re-advertise this for a nine-foot variance, and then... Yeah, I, I think for what you wanna do, we should re-advertise this for a nine foot variance, and then, that means we, 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 we can look at it in August.
Um, if I just do the deck only, then it will be okay with helping.
But you have no access to the deck, there's no way to get from, you can't connect them unless you have a variance.
I do have masonry walkway there.
Right, right, it doesn't go all the way to the, it goes to the end of the house, right?
He's still connecting it.
Yes.
Connecting those stairs, you're still connecting it to the house.
Right.
Do you still need a variance?
Now, he's planning on not connecting it, which I don't think the building department is gonna.
Stairs, it sounds like that's still connecting, but it's not like.
Well, if he builds stairs, but the slab only goes to the end of the house, and then the deck will, and so there's no way, they're not connect, they would not be connected, and I'm not sure the building department would sign off on that.
The drawing is showing it already being extended.
Right, it's not accurate, yeah.
Yeah.
What we would need is a description of what you wanna do with the slab, and this, the current picture that the, the sketch that the board has is not accurate, because it shows the slab going beyond the end of the house, and we would need.
It goes, it goes to the house, not the.
Right.
Right, and the picture that you've provided shows it going at least a few feet, probably three feet beyond the house, so we need a more accurate picture, written, drawing like this, and then we also need a description of exactly what you wanna do, and how close to the sideline you want, so that the.
Okay.
Staff can review it and approve it.
Brian has very generously offered to come out and meet with you at, at the house, and look at exactly what it is, so, so that he, he can then figure out exactly what the variance should be and how it should be advertised.
And when can someone come?
Tomorrow.
That'd be nice.
How's that?
That's not gonna speed the process.
It's not gonna speed the process.
Okay.
Look, if it's a short time, then he has to wait a month, it'll all be done, right?
Yeah.
Get what you want.
So if you look at it tomorrow, when, if you see that everything is okay, when can I hear that, I can go ahead and do it?
Um, in August eighth.
August eighth.
I think I, I can't be that long then, I'm an investor, I want to put it in the market after the deck is ready, so I think either it should be okay, or I'll just bid on my application.
Well, we don't, well, it's, withdraw.
Yeah.
I, I'm not inclined to grant just a, a freestanding deck that you can't get to safely, for an investment property. And give that headache to, to the next, to the owner, so. You can wait or withdraw.
I think my only option will be to withdraw, if I don't get any approval now or within like week or so.
Well, what would happen if you withheld your consideration until, you can, you don't have to withdraw tonight, you can, if we adjourn this till August eighth, you can decide, after thinking about it for a while. Whether or not you wanna withdraw, you don't have to withdraw tonight.
You tomorrow?
Yeah.
We can look and talk about it?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that'd be the best, best idea.
Is there any timeframe though?
And then, after, after you and Brian meet, and you figure out exactly what it is that you're gonna need for a variance, then it's up to you to decide, do you wanna go ahead or not? And that's entirely your choice. I mean, what we're trying to do is to see if we can find a way that you can, you know, make this new addition a really nice addition to the house, and, and, you know, beat the regulations, so.
Okay.
But.
In the morning, nine o'clock?
Uh, you would like to have my cellphone, tell me the time, I can be there?
I can, we can make, we can come up with a time right now.
What time?
Nine o'clock.
That's fine, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience wishes to address forty-seven sites terrace, okay, seeing none? Um, I move that the application in item number twelve be adjourned to our August meeting.
August eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels, okay. All right. Okay, Brian, thank you, um, this.
Yeah.
This was a kind of a awkward, but, okay, um, item number thirteen, Maria Franco, eight hundred Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
And if each of you would just state your names and be sworn in.
Kelly Powers.
Lilia DeFranco.
Maria DeFranco and Kelly Powers, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I have a letter of support here, I just wanted.
Okay. Okay, so if you'd briefly explain, um, what brings you here?
Yes, thank you very much, I'm here representing the building at eight hundred Main Street, and you, you all have this, this package here?
Yes.
Okay, if you look at that first page, I'm here to do, discuss the signage and the exposure for the tenant of Pittsburgh Paint, Pittsburgh Paints, which is the second tenant inside the building. There's Davies Hardware, um, o- over here, Advanced Auto Parts is in the front of the building, and Pittsburgh Paints is, is the yellow, the yellow square that you see there. And, as you can see, this, this particular building is unique in the town of Poughkeepsie, in that it's got access along Main Street, and also access from the arterial, connected by the sixty-five car parking lot. So if you're coming, we're, we're concerned with the visibility of people being able to know that Pittsburgh Paints is located not on Main Street, that it's in the middle of the block, it's set back. So it creates some unique sign issues, that I'm here asking for a variance for three larger signs.
Okay.
And I could walk you through the signs if you like?
Yeah, now, the, the, the way the, uh, variance is written, it, it sounds as if it's talking about two signs. A wall sign, and then one of the freestanding signs.
Yes, I believe what, what Sarah did there is that the property is allowed to have one sign, one freestanding sign.
Okay.
So she's saying that C, the, the sign on the arterial, I don't need the variance for.
Okay.
I, I believe, and that she's saying the top one, sign B on Main Street, is, is, that's the freestanding sign, and then the other one is sign A, which is above the actual doorway of the building.
Right, okay, 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 so one of the three signs is by right, so you don't have to, okay, fine.
That's great, huh?
Yeah, all right, um, Paul, any questions?
First of all, did the county respond, or?
A matter of local concern.
Okay, um, can you tell me, what's your clientele, is it mostly commercial, or how much of it is regular customers? Actually.
It's, it's mostly commercial, but we do have walk-ins as well, and most of our walk-ins actually are, we have a lot of people that get confused because they're looking for the.
Well, yes.
The art store.
Yes, actually.
They should look to the right.
Yeah, they, they, they have a hard time finding it, but actually, Pittsburgh Paints in this location is trying something new, it's got an interior decoration aspect, that's why they took, uh, the previous bil, business and, and brought this on, so, uh, there's, if you come into that building, uh, there's, uh, they just had an open house for fifty interior decorators. So it wasn't the local painters, the con, the ones who come at seven thirty in the morning, the contractors, right? They, they moved to this location to enhance their retail business from over Rocker Road to.
To be more visible.
Right, right.
On Main Street.
And, and, so, so they're in this space, and if you look at the, the third, if you look at the, the third sheet, and it's option number three inside of here. That's what the code, the, the sign on the building, allowed by code, looks like, that's, that's a drop under fifteen square feet, that's fourteen point eight eight square feet. So it's, I, I don't know whether you could tell exactly, but it's, it's out of proportion to the scale of the building, it's actually, it's actually unreadable, uh, from, you know, if you go across the street by, um, by Reddles, it's, it's very hard to see that.
What's on the building now?
What's it, this, this is what's on the building.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's what's on the building right now, right, and if you look, uh, the upper corner there, it says existing, that, that's, that was Catskill Art Supplies sign, and that sign was fifty square feet, of which you folks, or the, the board, the zoning board in two thousand and three, gave us a variance for, for that sign. So, um, and, and if you looked, um, the, the varying next sheet, it says entire building view, that shows the sign we would like to have, which is forty-four point six seven feet, you know, less than fifty, what it was before, and, um, it's, uh, it's, that, um, is keeping with the neighborhood, it's smaller than the Davies sign across the street, it's, um, smaller than the Catskill Arts Supplies sign that's got removed, uh, and it, it's appropriate to the scale of the building. And I, I know I'm in the ATC, um, and the ATC, um, it, the spirit of the ATC, it seems to me, is to, um, you know, there's the brick paving, there's the, um, uh, the old, old fashioned life, we used to have hanging plants, um, it's to get a, a neighborhood feel, to get a, a one-story mom and pop, uh, feel to, to the building, and, and that's, that's an admirable goal. The, my difficulty is that this particular building was the old nine X, it was a grocery store, it's a huge building for, for that, for, for being in the ATC, it's seventeen thousand square feet, and to put a tenant in the middle of that block, and not give him the advantage of being on a mom and pop street with fifteen square feet, you're hindering the, the use and the visibility of, of this building, of, of this tenant in the building.
The, the monument sign that's on Main Street?
Yes.
That's partially occluded by vegetation?
Tree.
A tree, yes.
Yes, uh, we're in the process of altering that fact, uh, my gardens, the gardens there need attention, and they, they will be, uh, cut back within the month.
Okay.
So what we're looking for is just to put that existing sign, not to change it, but just to put the PPG logo over it?
Okay, that's all I have, Betty?
So i- if I did it correctly, there's actually four variances that you need, you need one for, um, a wall sign, a twenty-nine point sixty-seven square foot variance for the wall sign, um, twelve point thirty-three square foot variance for the freestanding sign, um, I think the one on Main Street, and then you need a nine foot variance for the setback for the freestanding sign, and then you need a six foot height variance.
Um, I didn't know about the nine foot setback.
Says one foot setback.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's because the sign there next to Main Street. Um, is, is actually close to, to the right of way, it's, I mean, because Main Street there is a county road, and, um, I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure where the property line is, but, but according to the, to the, um, the application, it's, um, the, if, well, actually, if you look on the, the very first picture, you can see that, um, the, the sign, the base of the sign is actually quite close to the sidewalk there.
Yeah, it says that it has to be ten feet from any highway right of road.
Right, right, so you, we all know how long that pylon's been there, right?
Yeah.
That, that's the, my existing pylon, um, and, uh, I'm not able to keep my parking count if I move that in, plus I lose, um, if you go back to, um, if you go back to the, to the site plan, um, if that sign is ten feet, um, to the south, uh, someone coming down, um, Main Street would not know that PPG was a business in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Oh, I agree, I, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to determine what it is that, that you need.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, then, yes, I, 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 if the law says it has to be ten feet in, then yes, I do need a, a variance for that, okay.
Yeah, and the reason I brought up business about the county is that my understanding is that along Main Street, the county's right of way includes the sidewalks.
Could, could very well be, uh, you know, I also end up in a, in an odd, in an odd position, um, in that, um, if you look at the, um, uh, it's, it's Plan B, this, this one, uh, with, that shows the Main Street sign, if, right, right now I have, uh, Advanced Auto Parts, uh, sign on the top, and it's a certain size, and now, uh, with, under the new ATC zoning law, I'd be, PPG would have to get a smaller sign, but Advance doesn't, they're not coming up for a sign review, they can keep their sign the same size. So I'd be saying that one tenant is less important than the other tenant, and, uh, that's, y- y- you know, that's not an easy thing to do, uh, to have one tenant have a smaller sign than the, than the other one.
Um, the square footage of the two businesses is approximately equal?
It's, it is exactly equal, yes. Yes, the, the, I know it doesn't, that, that colored rainbow line there.
No, no, I mean, the, the floor space of the business.
Oh, the, yes, well, no, one is ten thousand and the other is seven thousand, actually, one is, um, I, I forgot the, the hallway, the, the, the common area, so one is eighty-five hundred square feet, and the other is seven thousand square feet.
Okay, but.
Yeah, yeah, roughly equal, yeah.
Okay. Paul, do you have any other questions?
No.
Betty?
Um, I don't think so.
Art?
No, no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience, address eight hundred Main Street, okay, hearing none, um, unless there are any other questions from the audience, there are motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, item fourteen, Jeffrey Wexler, twenty-eight Southgate Drive. Good evening, okay, if you'd state your name.
John McKee.
Mr. McKee, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, um, a deck.
Yes.
Okay. Is this a, a, a new deck, or a replacement?
It's a new deck, um, replacing an existing decks.
Okay, okay, in the same location?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Paul, any questions?
Do we have a consent, do you, okay, just checking, and can you just tell me your relationship, are you the, the builder?
I'm the contractor.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, we.
Okay, we were, we were out there, had a look. It's, it looks pretty straightforward. The only thing is, the house is a little crooked, so.
We could straighten that if he wants. I don't have a problem with that. If we could talk him into it.
Probably, probably not, okay. Uh, Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone wish to address twenty-eight Southgate Drive? Not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Item fifteen, Philip DePinto, forty, Robin Road.
Hello. How you guys doing? Wonderful. Great. Okay. How are you?
Mr. DePinto, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes, ma'am.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and the project that brings you here?
A covered porch.
Okay.
It's basically gonna be a hundred and fifty-two square feet when it's done.
Okay. Um, and the left side of it will be
Where I need the-
flush with a house, and it's a, a one-story porch?
Yeah, it's just one level with a roof over it.
Okay, and, but open otherwise?
Yes, open, a hand rail.
Okay. Paul?
Nope, no questions.
Betty?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
All right, and that, my only question was what kind of a porch it was gonna be. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No que-
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone from the audience, forty, Robin Road?
Delete.
The none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. The, the problem with our agenda is that the easy ones are always at the end.
Right.
Okay, item sixteen, Hudson Valley Building Technology, eighteen Longview Road. Okay.
Hi.
Good evening. Each state your name.
I'm Suzanne Venatosi.
Rich Venatosi.
Suzanne Venatosi and Rich Venatosi, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
I do.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you wanna just tell us a little bit about what you're doing there?
We bought a house recently, eighteen Longview. It's total rehab. Uh, what we proposed to do, there's a side porch. We wanna basically replace that with a bit of living space that we can turn into the kitchen. Excuse me.
Okay. Um, so it would be located ten feet from the side lot line?
Actually, that's a correction. I have today the paperwork from the surveyor, and off the property line, it's eight foot seven.
Eight foot seven, oh. Oh, dear. You did say-
That doesn't sound good, does it?
You, you did say the easier ones were saved towards the last.
Yeah, okay. All right.
He lied.
Uh, well, I, I, afraid in this one, we're just gonna have to re-advertise it. Okay, so you're just extending that, that side part?
From the corner, I'm gonna square this off here.
Okay, so it's not gonna be any closer to the lot line than, than that, coming off of the kitchen, right?
Yes, to the new stairs, and down here. There's gonna be the kitchen in this area here.
Okay.
Uh, the doorway, the basement is right here. The way it is right now?
Uh-huh.
There is no door to the basement.
Yeah, you should speak into a, into a microphone, yeah, yeah.
Where would you like me to leave off here?
There's a, yeah, isn't there a portable one?
No, you said where do you want him to start?
Oh, okay. So, looking at the, from Longview, the variance you're looking for is from, on the right side?
Correct.
Okay. Um, that's eight feet seven. You know, is that to that porch, or is it to the steps? That eight feet-
It's to the porch.
To the porch?
To the line.
All right. And then, it's just, twenty feet is required, okay. You, you recognize what the problem is? I think we're gonna have to re-advertise this one? Yeah, and we, we advertised under the, under the assumption that it was gonna be ten feet.
I apologize, I didn't know what to tell you.
Yeah, right, and now, and now we know it's eight, what, eight feet, seven inches?
Eight feet, seven, right.
Okay, since that actually requires a larger variance?
I should've shut my mouth, huh?
Yeah.
I think, I can't speak for the board, but I think everybody's in favor of what you're doing.
Appreciate that.
And, I mean, you know, you're fixing up a house in a, in a neighborhood, and, but it has to be re-advertised.
I'm not quite sure what that means.
It means we, we can't decide on it tonight, we'll have to do it next month.
By law, we have to notify, we have to put in a legal notice, so that everyone that has, would like to come and speak on this proposal would have a chance, and it has to be advertised in a paper.
Are you waiting on a building permit for the variance?
It's, it's underway right now.
You're working on it, right?
Yes, I-
So this isn't gonna really hold you up?
I was hoping to have the house done by next month.
Holy cow. Really?
Well-
Cause there's a lot of, it looks like there's a lot of work to be done there.
There is, but there's been a lot of work done already, so.
Okay.
You should've seen it before.
Okay, take your word for it. Um, okay, uh, but I don't, I don't know, is we have a choice here. Um, uh, I mean-
Eleven five now, right?
And, you know, when you go to sell it, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, it's with the survey, it's gonna be, and, and the, the buyer, and the banks, and everybody is gonna wanna know that it meets all of the codes or has all of the variances and that they're correct.
That's why I'm trying to do things above board. I don't want any surprises later.
Exa- exactly. I mean, the last thing you want is some potential buyer have to walk away 'cause, 'cause there's some violations.
I just don't wanna sit there and do absolutely nothing.
Yeah, I know. Um, I, I wish there were another way, but I don't- Can you lose a foot and a half on that porch?
Not really.
Okay.
Just the way the, the entrance for the stairs going down, there is no door, so having, I'm changing the, the stairs, and set it from the side
Right.
to the front, the entry door there, and the door for the stairs would be, for the basement, be right there, so it's, it's kinda hard to do that, and they have cabinets in there as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I, we're, I, we're just gonna have to re-advertise it and adjourn this to next month. Um, it's August eighth, um, so we're meeting fairly early in the month.
We'll be sending a notice to you. We'll be sending a notice out.
Yeah, we'd be sending a notice out and re-advertising it, and then we'll be able to act on it, August eighth.
Jim, I have one more question.
Yeah.
On the other side of the house, does that say seven feet?
It's touching that, right? And it's really eight.
It's eight point six on one corner and eight point zero on the, the corner closest to Longview is, according to the new survey, eight point six feet, and the further back corner is eight feet. So there's actually more room on that side. Apparently, the house was, in reality, was slightly closer, shifted on the site plan.
But does he need a variance for that side?
For both sides.
He's not changing anything over.
I'm not doing anything on that side.
Oh, he's not-
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
We'll need a copy. It doesn't have to be a sign stamped, but if you can give us one of these for next month.
Okay. All right, um, so, um, we're, I guess we're agreed reluctantly that we'll have to adjourn this, re-advertise it, um, re-notify the, the neighbors, but it will be on our agenda, and the only nice thing, it'll be earlier in the agenda.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Right, you, you've been very patient, thank you for, for that.
Obviously, I have no one to oppose.
Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to eighteen Longview Road? Okay, hearing none. Um, I move that, um, the request for variance in item sixteen be adjourned to August eighth to give us an opportunity to re-advertise for a variance, a side yard variance of eight feet, seven inches.
Second.
Now, you want the variance to be?
I just did it.
Right, okay. Okay, okay. Okay, just, so, yeah, to re-advertise for the appropriate variance. Okay, uh, is there a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels, okay, all right, and when we do it, we'll do it right.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If the building permit is granted beforehand, before this all gets solved, can I work on the rest of the house? Or is that all inclusive?
I, I, you're working on the house, right?
Absolutely.
Well, I've gone as far as I can without a permit.
Ah.
That's something that I think if you talk to Wayne about, he's pretty flexible with that kinda stuff. He'll understand. I'll talk to him tomorrow also about this.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it-
That's a building department question, not a zoning board question.
Yeah.
We can't answer that, so it depends what type of permit the building department's comfortable giving you.
I thought you guys were one and the same, sorry.
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, Capstone Plaza, it's forty-three Burnett Boulevard, and this relates to the Big Lots. Okay. Hello, okay, and your name?
Eric Merlis with Arnco Sign Company, and I'm from Madison, Connecticut.
Mr. Merlis, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, um, so if you wanna explain just briefly what it is you're seeking?
Sure, uh, this is for the Big Lots in the plaza, and it's to do a new storefront sign, which is a, a much nicer upgrade than the current one. It is the new Big Lots logo layout with exclamation point afterward, as opposed to the tagline box underneath, and this is to go to one forty-two point six five square feet, hundred forty-two point six five, with a hundred square foot being the max allowed, so we're looking to go up by forty-two point six five, with the main reason being this store is set so far back from the road, and there are trees blocking this plaza as well from the main road as well.
Okay, um, the, the County Department of Planning has sent us a letter dated July eleventh today. The Dutch County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the subject referral within the framework of general municipal law. After considering the proposed action in the context of countywide and intermunicipal factors, the department finds that the board's decision involves a matter of some concern. Action: The applicant seeks to erect a one hundred and forty-three square foot wall sign where one hundred square foot is permitted. The property is located within the Business Shopping Center, BSC District. Comment: The proposed sign is forty-three percent larger than allowed by code. The town currently prevents a wall sign of a hundred square feet for this business, which is more than adequate to provide visibility for customers from within the plaza, as well as those traveling along Burnett Boulevard. In the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, variances were sought for a large amount of signage in the subject shopping center. We note that the board previously granted variances for a freestanding sign with numerous tenant panels at the corner of, of Route forty-four and Burnett Boulevard. A tenant panel for Big Lots is proposed for location on this freestanding sign, and will provide business identification to those traveling Route forty-four. Recommendation: For the reasons stated above, and because granting the requested variance may set a precedent that encourages additional oversized signs, we recommend that the town not grant the requested variance. Voting and requiring, voting and reporting requirements: If the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires that it do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board, and that notify us of the reasons for its decision.
Okay.
And signed, Owen Rafter, of the Duchess County Department of Planning. Um, so I guess, do, do you have any comment on?
Um, no, I don't have any additional comment by that. Um, there's really nothing I could say as far as-
Okay.
It is what it is, I mean, you can't change their letter.
Yeah, Paul? Do you have a description or a rendition of what a hundred square feet looks like?
Pardon me?
Do you have something that shows what a hundred square feet, what the permitted sign would look like?
Um, if it was to be a hundred feet? No, I don't have something showing that. I just have the proposed, um, hundred forty-two.
How, how big is the one that is there right now?
Uh, the one that's there is, let me see if I can get that. I don't believe they gave me that information.
Okay.
But I would say it goes under the hundred square feet that is allowed.
You think it's, you think it's under a hundred square feet?
Yeah.
I, I did a, I did a kind of a quick measurement, and I, I got a hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay.
For the existing sign.
And that seems like more than enough. So we could even go with a hundred square feet. What's allowed?
Okay, um, well, let's, let's just, let's go around the, Paul, do you have any? Yeah, on the, you're gonna have Big Lots on one of the pylon signs, is that you also, or is that-
The pylon sign, yes.
Okay, and what about the mi, what about the monument sign on the main entrance? Are you there also?
Um, just one we're showing is this shared one, the forty-four plaza with Coffee Shop up top.
Okay.
I don't show another one. I believe this is the one that they're referring to
Yeah.
that was granted the variance for, for the whole plaza, where it's taking over the same, you know, it's just the new, new layout of Big Lots on there with the black background, as opposed to the yellow.
Okay, that, that's all I have then. Okay, Betty?
Now, Carmen asked my question on how big the sign is that's up there already. That's the only question I have.
Yeah, they, they-
It's a huge building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It definitely needs to be upgraded, for sure. Uh, the new, um, work that they've been doing in that plaza really looks nice.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the new, um, walls and rock walls and stuff that they've been putting up there looks really great.
Yeah, the paint's chipping really bad on there, on this building.
The, the whole facade, yeah, needs to be fixed. But people had no trouble finding it yesterday, 'cause I don't know where they came from. There were signs up and down forty-four said twenty percent off at Big Lots. They appeared overnight, and it was packed, 'cause I went to the grocery store.
Yeah. And the, those signs, by the way, I think were illegal.
Oh, they had to be, but you know what? They're gone today.
Yeah.
It was like magic.
Yeah, yeah, give them credit. Pick 'em down.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so any other comments?
No.
Art?
I don't know, it's, so what are we talking, twenty square feet, roughly, bigger? Twenty-six, twenty-six than what it is now?
We, there's been no testimony as to what-
Jim guesstimated.
I can, I can pull up, if you go on, give me a second, I could pull it up on my computer.
Yeah, on, on the diagram, there's a scale.
Right.
And so I-
There's been no testimony as to what...
Jim guesstimated.
I can, I can pull up, if you go on, give me a second, I could pull it up on my computer.
On the diagram, there's a scale.
Right.
And so, I...
I could pull it up if you want, give me a second.
The only thing in that, the only other building or business in that area that is maybe close to that size is Stop &amp; Shop. And, you know, their signage is already up, so...
Yeah.
I don't see where we would be starting a precedent, 'cause it's that, that whole plaza all by itself is unique enough.
Yeah.
But that is a huge building at Big Lots.
It is a very...
But I have, I have two issues, and one is I'm not sure where they got the 143 square feet, because if you, if you measure the size of the proposed sign the way the code says, which is the smallest rectangle that you can put around it, okay, then you get 167 square feet. It's because of that exclamation point.
The exclamation point goes above and below.
Above and below, yeah. So, actually, you know, the square footage is, you know, it's more than 143. My calculation said it's 167, but, you know, I'm just a retired physicist, what do I know? So, the other, the other thing that, kind of hesitation I have is, and in part, I want to compliment you on the design of the sign. I mean, the kind of the white with the black outline, it's really visible.
Yeah, they're new logos.
Okay, it is so much more readable than the old one, that I don't think you need it to be that big to be visible from Burnett Boulevard. You can't see it from 44 anyway. So, the only, the only people you're trying to reach out to and say, "This is it," are people driving on Burnett Boulevard. And I went by there today, and the existing sign is clearly visible from Burnett Boulevard. The new one that you've designed will be unmistakable. Nobody's gonna miss it. So, I don't think it needs to be that big. And people on Burnett Boulevard, and then the people that are already in the plaza. So, I just don't think we need it that big. So...
Did you come up with what the...
I'm getting it right now.
So, to me, 100-square-foot sign with this new design, I think, would be perfectly adequate. And I know it's a big building, but in that mock-up, that sign looks huge, at least to me.
Less than a minute. I can pass this around. It's currently five foot seven height. That's the Big Lots with the bargain closeout, and we're moving down to, it is five foot three, the Big Lots, but with the exclamation point, it goes up to six foot one. So, it's going up, you know, four inches with exclamation.
Okay.
And the width...
That's about what I got.
The width of it is...
Look at that.
It's 148 feet is that whole storefront section there. It's giant, it's like in that time, in the left corner only. Yeah, they're just giving me the height, which is five foot seven.
For, for the old sign?
For the existing, right.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I estimated the height at about six feet, and the width, their length is about 20 feet. That's where I got the 120 square.
That'd be 120, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's in that ballpark.
So, you, you got a measurement for the new sign, higher than what?
Yeah, because when you draw the box around it...
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and, you know...
Well, that could be a problem or something.
Yeah, so...
I mean, I think if you, I just did the math, and I come up with 167, roughly, 166.92, so...
We're off by about the decimal point.
Exactly, so, if, but if that's the actual variance that's required the way the signs are measured, then it's another case where it hasn't been advertised properly, and you'd be granting a larger variance.
Right.
Where the board's so inclined to do that.
Well, I mean, there's that, there's also the county, which basically says it should be, stick with the current code, 100 square feet is what it should be. I could see kind of splitting the difference and staying with something that's in the order of 120 square feet. That would be, and it would have to be measured in the way prescribed by the code. That would get us closer to the 100 square feet of the code, and yet allow them to put up a sign that would be comparable to the existing one.
How much leeway do you have in the sign sizes?
They have a package that they do, you know, I'm the National Advanced Sign Group, I'm just a local installer. I could submit to them saying, you know, what could we reduce this down to?
Here's what I think probably, since it would have to be re-advertised anyway, if it were, if it didn't fail tonight, if you came up with some renditions of what 100 square feet looks like, what 120 square feet looks like.
Yeah.
And you'd have to...
That might be helpful to you.
You might want to work with the staff to make sure that the measurements are in accordance with what the code requires.
They're saying that the length, 21 foot, one inch was the length of existing. What's there now?
20, okay, all right, so then, okay, wait, 21?
Foot, one inch, so basically 21 feet.
Okay. But you were dealing with a rectangle before. Now, you're dealing with a rectangle with a high point and a low point, and then, and that's where we measure our rectangle from. Yeah, all right.
That's about 115 square feet, maybe a little, maybe a little more.
Actually, it's gonna come out to just about 120 square feet. It's gonna be pretty close. I can't do the math in my head, but, okay. 'Cause the length is a little more than what I estimated, and the height is a little less than I estimated. They kind of balance out. Okay, I think the best way to go then is to adjourn this, and if you could come up with a, and you'll have to consult with the sign makers to see what's possible, but see what something in the 100-square-foot ballpark looks like, what's something in the 120, 125-square-feet ballpark. And then, we already have the one that is in the 167.
Couple of renditions.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone that wants to address 43 Burnett Boulevard? No one? So, I move that we adjourn the variance request in item number 17 to the August 8th meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousals, okay.
August 8th meeting, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yep, and that means that you should get the renditions to Sandy.
July 20.
July 20. Okay.
Can we send those, or do they have to...
Yeah.
Email's fine.
I'll get them out.
Mail? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Touching Sandy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 18, Beacon Residential LLC, 297 Violet Avenue. Okay, this is the last item on the agenda. You guys have been here from the beginning, thank you so much for your patience.
So have you guys.
Yeah, but you get to go in a few minutes.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless I wait.
That's right, and...
Okay, so if you'd each quickly state your names and be sworn in.
Stephen Burns. And Tim Owen, Beacon Residential.
And I'm the owner, and Steve is the engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Burns and Mr. Owen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, you were here a few months ago, months ago, and there were some variances that we granted then, so we kind of know what the project is, so I guess you can cut to the chase here.
Okay, what happened was is that, actually, I have, I have some letters of support from Mr. Schmeling, and also a map that kind of more clearly dictates what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
She doesn't...
Ignore her. Don't worry about her. Okay, what happens is, is that the site is about .45 acres, and the proposal is for a, for a four-unit residential apartment building. Eight parking spots are proposed along with handicap spot. That's two for each apartment. And the planning board also requested that we provide two overflow parking spots to serve, to serve just in case for visitors and that. With that being laid out, originally, the layout had an 18-foot aisle width for the parking area. The approval from the planning board required that that be increased to a 24-foot width. That made it required to push the back setback for the parking down to four feet. We've revised drainage so that it works out with drywells underneath the pavement. The drawing shows, the red is existing building, this is an existing garage, this is the proposed building, and this is a, this is the Schmeling Glass Building. The Schmeling, the Schmeling Glass property actually extends back behind the parcel all the way up to the corner. Hudson River State Hospital, I believe, is right here, and about 75 feet back is a mobile home park, I forget the name though.
Yards.
This 75-foot strip is, the majority is wooded. So, and it's kind of an odd-shaped lot that make it, makes it very difficult to do anything with that area, and you can see that from the aerial photo that I provided. The applicant's requesting a four-foot, a reduction of four foot on the back setback, and also a increase in the impervious area allowed to just over 51%, 51.6%.
And I'm guessing the reason for the impervious surface is the length of the driveway and the parking lots.
Yes.
Yeah, and given the, and you want to, you want to keep the apartments back away from the street, I guess.
Yes, and what happens is the lot narrows as you get, as you approach the front, and we end up with setback issues. And also, the overflow parking is, has a variance to the property line already, and that fixes where the, where the back sidewalk is because of the parking spot size.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
No, I don't have questions.
Betty?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, I've asked mine. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No, no questions.
Okay, anyone in the audience wish to address 297 Violet Avenue? Guess if there are no other questions, yeah.
We waited a while.
You suppose the television audience knows that, you know, both of them? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our quick hearing agenda. Okay, I'm getting signals saying we need to have a brief recess. Okay, okay, so we'll stand in recess for five, 10 minutes. Okay, okay, would the meeting please come back to order? We're now in the deliberation phase, and as is our custom, we will take the applications of the people that are in attendance first, so let's go to item number eighteen. This is Beacon Residential LLC, two ninety-seven Violet Avenue.
It was messy.
They're seeking two variances, one for impervious surface coverage of fifty-one point eight percent, where a maximum of forty percent is allowed, and two to allow parking to be located within four feet of the property line, where a minimum setback of twenty feet is required. This is is an unlisted action, and so it the the planning board may have already ruled on this, but we can we can do it in just in case. I move that for purposes of environmental review, the zoning board of appeal declare itself lead agency for the consideration of the variances at two ninety-seven Violet Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ZBA, based on information submitted by the applicant in an environmental assessment form, finds that the actions proposed in item number eighteen will have no significant effect on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On the variants themselves, any comments? You know, I think they're pretty pretty straightforward.
We didn't we do this before, and then this is just?
Well, well, there were there were it was a different set of variances that we that we granted, but it's the same, and there's there's no staff report, so we have to have some some findings here, so let me make the motion here. I move that the board approve the request for a variant set forth in item number eighteen. This decision is based on review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings as follows. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The board notes that the neighboring property, Schmeling Glass, has submitted testimony that it will have no negative impact on their property. The board also notes that there is a wooded buffer area separating the proposed development to the nearest residential property, which is the the trailer court. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The board finds that, given the configuration of the lot and the requirement for parking areas, that there is that only variances of some kind would would allow this. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the increase in impervious area is significant, but not unduly so, the and and the applicants have made arrangements for proper drainage, and the given the location of the parking area, granting the variance is it will not is not substantial. And four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions, for the same reasons, the board finds that it will not have a significant environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is self-created in the sense that this is a a new construction, but this doesn't preclude granting the variance. So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, I I think when we saw this the first time, it's a nice nice project and so on on the motion to approve the two variances, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousals? Okay, good luck.
Who is the second on that?
Me.
Thank you, board, we appreciate it.
Okay, and again, thank you for your patience.
It was it was to the wire.
Was it?
We we got to be quick.
Okay, so we're back to the top of the agenda, item one is adjourned. Items two and three, and should we deal with those separately? Yes. Okay, so item number two. This is Wayne McDonald, twelve Ridgeview Terrace, a variance, variances or a variance to allow a proposed carport to be located five feet, six inches from the side lot line, where ten feet is required. This is a type-two action, so we don't have to do anything there, and you will find a staff report recommending that this be denied. So any questions, comments?
If you believe the applicant's testimony that it's simply for the storage of a classic car, I think there are other alternatives to that than than the carport.
You don't need eight for one car.
Well, he he could always put another shed behind the house with the car in the garage.
Yeah.
That's feasible.
Yeah.
And the neighbors are pretty adamant about this thing, I mean, you know, I'd have to lean toward their, you know, their concerns.
Yeah.
And and he has a scene he has a tendency to seem to fill up every available bit of space, first the garage that was built with the house, then a shed that he filled.
Right.
It seems that whatever space he gets, he fills with stuff other than what his passion is that's taking care of this car.
So, you know, I think I'd have to lean with the neighbors on this one.
Yeah.
He's already shown that he's going to do what he wants, pretty much. He got the he put the platform in, he put the, excuse me, he put the ramp in, you know.
Yeah, and I I was there, actually, I went again this morning to double check, and if he wants to, he could drive into the back.
Probably.
You know, there is that tree, but actually, there's room on both sides of it. Now, and and I was really surprised at the size of that temporary shed or whatever it is that's in the back, I mean, that's large.
Monsters. There's there are two other neighbors with with adjacent streets that have, you know, like a carport, let's say, portable carports, and they're they're very attractive, they're more of a canvas kind, solely for the purpose of either protecting a boat or protecting a car or whatever off-season, and they're unobtrusive. This 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 is not in keeping with the character.
Okay. All right, so I I think we're we're there's a real consensus to deny this. How do we how should we construct the motion on this?
Just move to deny.
Could just to to deny and then use the staff report as the finding.
And use the staff report.
Okay. Paul, do you want to?
Sure, I move that the board deny the variant set forth in item two. Decision is based upon the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In denying the variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. So move.
Okay. Right, so is there a second to that?
Two of them.
Two. Oh, okay, okay. So if there's no other discussion, we'll go to the vote, remember that a a a vote is to deny. So all in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousals? Okay, it's denied, seven zero. Okay. Item number three, again, Wayne McDonald, twelve Ridgeview Terrace, to allow the parking or storage of motor vehicles in the front yard, and this, again, is a type-two action. There is no staff report on this, though the existing staff report. Does it address the size of the? Actually, if it doesn't, okay, so we'll have to come up with some new findings on that. Okay. All right, comments on this parking or storage of the motor vehicles in the front yard?
I'd have to go with the same reasoning, Jim, I mean.
I don't think he established any grounds to to grant it.
Yeah, the 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 only
He wants it.
Argument in the defense is that down the street, there is this motor home that is that is parked.
Well, it's not, that motor home is parked back next to the house.
Yeah, it is.
It's not in front.
Right, and
Look at the picture, they
And the the other argument that he made is that what he's asking for is the same as twenty-one, and if you look at twenty-one, the cars there are in fact parked behind the front lot line, and the driveway is is not nearly, I I think what what he's looking for, thirty thirty-six feet of driveway, which to me is just way too big. Yeah, thirty, yeah, looking for a thirty-six-foot-wide parking area, which is just way way out of scale to to a residential neighborhood. Are we kind of agreed on this one? Okay. Betty, do you want to do the motion, and then we'll together work out the findings?
We're denying this one also?
Yeah.
All right. I move that the board deny the variant set forth in item number
Three.
Three. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff re- there was no staff report. In denying this variance, the board adopt as findings the determinations that we're about to.
Okay, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The board has determined, based on its site visits and a a a look at the neighborhood, that having a front yard parking area of this size would change the character of the neighborhood, and we have heard testimony from neighbors to that effect.
I think that the front yard is not really big enough to to support parking in the front.
Right. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, the board, based on its site visit, believes that additional parking could be created and parking and storage could be created in the backyard and thereby eliminating the need for a front yard variance. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, a thirty-six-foot-wide parking area is very substantial for a residential neighborhood. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, we we have heard testimony from the neighbors that parking vehicles in the front yard will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is self-created, obviously. Okay, so those are the findings, and let's see, Betty, you moved the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so if there's no other discussion, again, the motion is to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousals? Okay, denied, seven zero. Item number four, okay, and and the first of the variances has been adjourned, so we're voting now only on
Fun.
A
To the place.
Yeah, a variance to allow a freestanding sign to be located on a property line where ten feet is required. This, signs are usually unlisted, so but I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agents, lead agent for the
Coordinated review.
Is it?
Yeah, it's with the planning board.
Okay, have they issued a negative declaration on this?
I think they have. I think they, isn't it a coordinated review? Oh, no, I don't think it was the planning board, I apologize.
What's that?
Yeah, I don't think
By the way, special use
Which one, which one yard?
According to the agenda, number five was listed as uncoordinated review and unlisted. I don't know that whether the planning board.
No, I'm wrong.
I don't think they ever went to the planning board on this.
Okay, okay, so we we'll just, let's just go ahead and just in case. Um, so I move that ZBA declare itself lead agent for purposes of the environmental review of the second variance in item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousals. Um, I move that the that based on the uh environmental assessment form provided by the applicant that the ZBA finds that the action proposed in um variant, variance number two of item four will not have a significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. All right, um, on the variance itself, um, we are looking simply at the location of a freestanding sign that otherwise meets the requirements for the business neighborhood district. Um, comments?
I I like where it is right from the beginning and I held my tongue tonight because I didn't want to say it again, but I feel that that pylon keeps the cars from cutting the corner too short and being more disastrous than that corner already is.
How does, how do you, there's already a barrier there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the sign, that's what the barrier is for, so they can't cut the corner.
Well, what does that have to do with the planter?
Doesn't, it's just by law.
No, it it does. They have to go around it, they can't cut the sh- cut the corner short. If you're coming from Grand Avenue, they cut that corner really short.
But we're talking about the planter.
Yes, and the planter is what keeps the cars from they have to go around it.
And the the sign emphasized is the location.
Wait, wait, you you think that cars are gonna drive through the parking lot, through both parking lots?
I don't know.
No, but without, not now they won't, but without that planter there, they
She's talking about clipping the corner, that's all.
They cut the corner too short.
Without it.
Without the planter?
Without the planter, yes.
About the whole thing, without the barrier.
The barrier is there.
Yes.
People are still cutting the corner with the barrier?
No, 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 no.
Then what does that have to do with?
The barrier is the planter. Isn't the, isn't the the barrier the planter?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it was there before we went out the first time.
Yes.
No, 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 the, there's a barrier there. We're talking about a planter where the sign's gonna go.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Well, this, that planter could go anywhere, right?
No.
No, it's the base for the sign.
That's right, so it could be here or it could be here, right?
No, where it is right now.
It isn't anywhere right now, right?
It is there.
It is the barrier.
There.
Planter is the barrier.
Yeah, there is. Oh, it's it's a piece of wood, I I take it back, it's a piece of wood where it's gonna go.
If it's approved, that's where it would go.
Right.
But to say that the planter keeps cars from going
That having something in that The future.
There is something there, the the barrier is there keeping them from cutting, so the planter is there.
Okay, so so having the barrier there means that one of the major reasons for requiring the ten-foot setback no longer exists.
Okay.
Because, you know, normally you 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 put it back so the cars don't hit it.
Okay.
Okay, the whole idea here is to prevent cars from cutting that corner.
Right, but that's out, that's
So so therefore, putting the the sign out there is is not a traffic hazard.
From being, from people, from cutting?
Driving into it, yeah, yeah.
But my question is going to be, why can't it be, why does it need to be there, it could be moved closer to the building, right?
Um. I think uh it's a matter of of visibility. Putting it, putting it out, um.
Do you think it's that much more visible closer to the barrier than five feet behind?
Yeah, now, you know, the applicant does have, could have other choices for what to do with that sign. I mean, the old store had a, had it projecting off the building. There could be a a flat wall sign, okay. For whatever reason, they've chosen to have this freestanding sign. And they wanna locate it right there behind those those barriers. And you know, if if you and I were designing the building, we might do it differently, but that's not the question before us, the question is are we gonna allow them to locate it where 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 they're asking? And for me, there's, there there are no compelling reasons not to.
Tell me this, do you think in any way that, does that sign impair visibility?
I don't think so.
No.
Didn't indicate that when I was there.
So, I like, I like it on that corner because it squares up the parcel and it kind of makes a marking of where cars should park. If I went to that sto- that deli coming from Innes Avenue and that that sign was closer to the building, you're really, if you park to go there, you're really kind of opening yourself up there. I I think it's a safety factor, I think it brings the corner to a corner and people have to go around it.
So after I left the field trip, I had an opportunity to be back at that intersection with a school bus there. And that's, that school bus, that sign would block a school bus is the driver's ability to look on grand if he was on De La Balle. Now, even though that's controlled by a stoplight, I think there is a concern of pedestrians, people that the driver would not see or people that aren't regulated by the traffic light. Are you concerned at all about that?
I mean, given that it's, you know, a a fully signalized intersection and that there's no right turn on red.
Right, what about the park, people coming up, backing out of the parking spots? They're not controlled by the light?
Okay, but but how does that, what's that have to do with the location of the sign?
It blocks, it blocks a driver from seeing somebody backing out from the parking spot, then it interferes with their driver, with their
I don't, I don't, I just, you know, they
The sign is high enough.
Raise it up so that there's, there's
Right, I'm not talking about cars, but I'm more concerned about school buses and trucks, those elevated driving positions.
You know, I've I've gone by there a number of times since we've been there also, and I didn't see anybody having any problems.
Well, that's because there's no sign there.
No, but I still don't think we're gonna have an issue because it's, again, it's gonna be higher than we want, than he wanted it.
Mm-hmm.
And
I have some, I have some concerns about the sign.
You have to put some respons- responsibility on the drivers, like they said. Can't just zip through there and assume that you're gonna blow that light or, you know, blow that corner.
I'm more concerned about pedestrians and and people backing out of the parking spots.
Then I think no matter where he puts the sign, he's in trouble.
I'm sorry?
And I think no matter where he puts the sign, he's in trouble, if we go that way.
Well, I don't even think he needs a sign, but nonetheless.
Well
Title to a sign.
Yeah, I
Now, those are my concerns.
Yeah.
If you don't care about the safety of little children.
Oh, holy
I mean, to me, I I would think a a a projecting sign would um create a a a a look that at least to me would be better. You know, a more kind of a I don't know what.
Okay.
But, um, you know, and the as, and you know, and as we s- we said, you know, we thought the sign could be a little higher, and I think they've agreed to do that. And it could be a little smaller, although it is substantially less than what the code requires, so I I, you know, we can't do much there.
And you're absolutely certain that the vision, the line of um sight from a school bus is blocked?
That, I, when I saw that school bus there, that, and imagining where the sign would be, yes. I was a little disappointed in the ma- the mock-up.
In that?
I expected there to be a mock-up.
Well, all we were looking at really was the height to determine if, you know.
And just this this size and and the the location. Any other comments? Larry, Tony, Carmen?
I think of, you know, you you mentioned those as a a flat sign, that'd be worse, because people be turning their heads to see what it said. At least this thing's right in front of you and you're coming up there. If it's off to the side, you know, it's gonna distract you even more, my feeling, but
Well, I mean
Personal opinion.
Yeah, um.
Why do all the school buses go up grand anyway?
Are they going to the back wing to the um no, no, that, they're on De La Balle.
Yeah, they, if they were going the back to the school, they'd be going over a tap.
Okay, um, all right, is is there a staff report on this?
School buses on the road. I think so.
It was.
Okay, uh, um. All right, is there a consensus here?
I'm okay with it.
I
Oops. Oops.
I guess I am too.
That's why there's seven of us.
Oh, where'd you learn that? I'm okay, I, it did not appear to me like that would be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's, it's seems to me it comes down. I mean, there were, there were a number of arguments were made against it. And 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 some of those, I think, were irrelevant. I mean, it it it, this this lot is zoned the way it is. So, you know, the the, whatever kind of business is is there is is not something we can do anything about. A number of the issues that were raised are really kind of planning board um issues, including what kind of a sign would fit best in terms of the architecture in the neighborhood and so on. That's not our determination. Seems to me the 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 one set of arguments that is relevant to the location of the sign has to do with the safety issues. And um I'm convinced based on the the site visit that we did, but also just traveling through there on a pretty regular basis that um you know, given the current uh traffic regulations for that intersection, there 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 may be some problems, but they're
Could I interrupt for just a moment?
But they're not about the sign.
If the town police gave some input on on it? That in any way affect your decision?
No, because I'm not sure what what would their evidence be. I mean, there's a, there's a traffic record, um, so we could go to an accident record, but of course, you know, that that's without the sign. And and really doesn't tell us what would happen if there were a sign.
If the traffic department said that they felt that it was either safe or unsafe, you're saying that you wouldn't take that into account at all?
It would be, it I would, it would depend a lot on what their evidence was. And I don't, I don't know that their evidence would really be much different than ours. You you go out and you look and you say, i- is is this obstructing either the flow of traffic or or the sight lines that would be required? They're basically making the same determination that we are.
That's true, I think they may have a little more experience than us.
You know, I what what's it take, five years, twenty years, I, you know? So, okay.
If they were that concerned, they probably would have already weeded on anyways.
I don't know. Okay, um.
And and I I think an important question to ask is does the existence of that store in the past or in the present have anything to do with accidents?
Of course not, it has to do with the way people drive. Has to do with the way people drive.
Exactly.
If we could just get rid of the people.
I know, right?
Well, with the trees.
When you get a license, you're supposed to know what red means and what green means.
That purple dragon used to have by climate
That we're beating this to death.
Oh, I know.
Okay, um. Let's, let's draft the motion in the affirmative and see what happens. Uh, so let's see, who's, who are we?
I said we. I move that the board approves the request for an area variance set forth in item, yeah, are we, four? Four B, is it, second point, four point two? This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and no staff report, right?
No.
No staff report. In approving the this variance, the board adopts as findings, the determinations found in items one through five of the item one.
All right, so the 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 findings are
Our discussion.
Okay, so whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
They use Kelly's because she usually does a good job.
Okay, if if there's something there. Oh, okay, oh, I I I just found it, okay. Okay, uh, okay, for the no, wait a minute, that's not it. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, down where it says variance two and then it goes down to one.
Yeah.
He's talking about the sign.
Okay, um.
No, no.
Okay, um. Okay, uh, the board finds that the applicant has invested in improving the property, which is in a dilapidated state. Improvements have included the complete renovation of the first floor and modifications to the interior of the structure, which essentially resulted in an entirely new facade. The sign meets the requirements of the DN zone. However, because the lot is so small, there are, there are no locations on the property where the required setbacks for a freestanding sign can be properly met. The location selected for the sign is on the inside corner of a guide rail and the sign has been professionally designed to fit in with the surrounding community. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Uh, as shown on the attached drawings due to the geometry, the existing lot, there are very limited areas for the replace- for the placement of the sign. There are no feasible locations, given the road access and parking configuration. I would add to that, the the board does note that um there could be other um types of signs um proposed for this location. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Although the variance is to permit the sign with a zero setback, the design of the sign and the configuration of the lot make the appearance of the sign location to be appropriate on the parcel. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The sign has been professionally designed and is consistent with the building design and will fit in well with the neighborhood. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. The requested variance is being sought due to the configuration of the parcel. The requested variance is being sought due to the configuration of the parcel, the location of the adjoining road relative to the site improvements, and the location of the parking. Okay, um, anybody wanna modify that? Okay.
Fine, John.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to, um, approve a freestanding sign to be located on the property line where ten feet is required. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Recusals? Okay, approved. Six, one.
Who's second in that? Okay.
Okay. All right, and then the sec- or the the first variance in that is, um, adjourned to August. Uh, item number five has been withdrawn. That brings us to item six. Which is, um, the Duchess Golf and Country Club. Okay, is is there a staff report on that?
I didn't see one. I didn't see one.
Come on, guys, help us out here.
Gotta fire the staff.
This hour of the night.
We used to do this without staff reports.
Yeah, I know, we did.
No staff report, okay. All right, um, basically, we've got here. And I didn't even think we were gonna do this tonight, but, okay. All right, uh, this is now, um, a variance to allow the proposed construction of a one-story building to be set back ninety-two feet from the front property line where two hundred feet is required. I am told that the planning board is the lead agency and that they have issued a negative declaration of the environmental. Okay, um. Okay, what's, uh?
Page two.
What's page two? Oh, 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 I see, okay. Okay, all right, in the in the application, you will find a list, essentially, answers to the questions that could be, that will be the findings, okay. My my sense of the board is that, um, people are in favor of this?
Good.
Okay? All right. Okay, um. I move that the board, uh, approve the request for a variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings. The determinations included in pages two and three of the application which address the, um, the, um, criteria for granting, uh, a variance as set forth in our zoning regulations. The the short version of these is that given the configuration of the property, this new structure will have very little impact on, um, any of the the surrounding properties. And the variance that's being requested here is similar to variances that have been obtained by many other buildings up and down Route nine. So move. Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion.
Who are you calling?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, recusals? Okay, item six is approved. Seven, zero. Okay, um, item number seven, uh, this is the, um, uh, yeah, this is the, uh, uh, building up on Duchess Turnpike, that's been adjourned.
That's adjourned. Yeah, that's adjourned, yeah, August.
Okay, item number eight. This is, um, a, this is three nineteen Violet Avenue. Okay, um, a variance to allow a fence of up to six feet to be located in a front yard where the maximum height of a fence shall not exceed three point five feet. It's a type two action. There is, um, staff report recommending that this be denied. I note that it's a corner lot and, um, the applicant has agreed to reduce, um, the, uh, amount of fence along Miller Place in a way that would, uh, I think greatly reduce the the impact. We also note that it's a wooden fence. So, um. Larry, do you wanna make the motion on this and then, um, we will modify the staff report a little bit?
Leave my note.
Okay. I move that the board approve request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application. Testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing. Results of site visits by board members. And the staff report.
Okay.
You can't use the staff report, right?
Well, it, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, adopt his findings, the the following. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The the staff, uh, report notes that the purpose of the, uh, order, or the, uh, um, requirement is to prevent the proliferation of fences within the front yard that would have the effect of limiting site distances along the street line, including ingress and egress of driveways, and to prevent giving the appearance of a series of closed-off and gated residence. The board notes, uh, that in, uh, this case, the applicant has agreed to reduce the amount of fencing in the front, in in the front yard that, um, faces, uh, Miller Place in such a way to leave, um, the entire front yard along, um, Violet Avenue and the entire corner, um, open and, uh, so that it doesn't have a a walled appearance. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible, um. There are other ways of achieving, uh, privacy, um, landscaping shrubs and that sort. But this, these, it it take, uh, considerable time to, uh, to develop and mature. Um, and in terms of providing, uh, safety and privacy, there there are, um, few feasible alternatives. Whether the area, the requested area variance is substantial. It's substantial in the sense that it's a six-foot fence rather than three and a half. Um, again, the board notes that the applicant has agreed to reduce the, uh, the length of the fencing. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The, um, the the fence has no effect, um, on, um, sightlines or or traffic, um, because of its setback. And, um, the, um, the fence will replace some dilapidated existing fence and arguably will, um, actually improve the conditions. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, locating, deciding to construct the, um, fence is something that's self-created. Okay, any, uh, comments, additions, changes? Okay.
I think that's one of the few places in the town where stockade fence is actually appropriate.
Which is one thing.
I said it's one of the few places in the town where stockade fence is actually appropriate.
Yeah. I I s- I still maintain that, um, there's a whole lot of fence at six feet. And, um, I just don't think it's it's necessary.
Okay, uh, all right, so, uh, we've got the motion, um.
Second.
Okay, there's a second?
No, you can't.
All right, uh. Okay, so this is to, um, approve the six-foot fence, um, with a reduced, um, extent that the applicant agreed to. Okay, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Recusals? Okay, approved. Six, one. And no recusals, okay. Item number nine, uh, Michael and Helen Tosh, sixteen Pi Lane. A variance to allow a fence of up to six feet to be located in the front yard where the maximum height shall not exceed three point five feet. This is a type two action. And there's a staff report, um, uh, recommending that this be approved. And just, um, a a note to our counsel. There, I think there's a typo in the in the last sentence, the conclusion of the staff report.
I think it's just awkward.
Oh, okay, all right, it it
I read it a couple times.
It wasn't clear that there was not, should be a knot or something in there, okay, all right. But anyway, we're, we all understand it.
With a red pen, I would just write orc.
Okay. Okay, any, uh, comments on this discussion?
I think her front yard is so expansive that you wouldn't even, you would almost expect a fence along that side.
Okay, all right, that's a good way to put it.
Very, very wide.
Yeah. And and I believe what she's got in mind matches a fence on the
Right.
opposite side of the yard.
Right.
In in a, in any case, I I think most of the neighbors after the second day won't even see it. They'll just sort of blend blend in. Any other?
Well, in in that case, I I would still, um, not want to allow a six-foot fence there. She doesn't need that to cover up the brush and and some fallen branches.
She feels she does. She feels she does.
Pardon me?
She feels she does.
She feels that she does.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And I feel that she doesn't need it.
Good, let's vote, let's vote.
I mean
Why, it's apple.
And and that could be perfectly the case, although if if you if you look at our code, wh- why do, why do we forbid fences in the front? Well, it, you know, the code says, well, because we don't wanna create this this walled
Right.
appearance. And, um, these tend to block sightlines and things like that. But in but in this case, of course, there's no there there's no road there to 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 block.
Anything and
None of the evils that the code is addressing exist here. None of the evil
No, yeah, okay.
That the code is trying to correct to prevent exists here.
Yeah, and so the the way the lot is configured, it it's such a funny shape that
Some people have a lot of time on their hands.
I wish I did. I wish I did. Okay, uh. Okay, uh, Tony, I guess we're around to you, you wanna make the motion on this one?
Larry. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, a testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing. Results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings and determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve application, uh, or the variance in item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? What? Okay, one nay?
Never met a six-foot fence you liked.
That's not true, that's, she's voted for six foot.
Yeah, she has.
I, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome, I'm there for you.
Okay, item number ten. Samuel and Kathy Sylvester, nineteen Lakeview Avenue. A variance to allow the parking or storage of motor vehicles in the front yard specifically to widen an existing driveway from, what'd they say, nine feet to seventeen and a half feet. Uh, it's a type two action and there's a staff report recommending that this be denied. Or or that actually should not be granted at this time and asking for more information. Okay, how do people feel about this?
Don't like it.
You don't like it?
It's more front yard, giving up for parking. It's a rental house. Their only reasoning is that the kids don't wanna move the cars because they're in lines, same as we did over
We've heard that before, though.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
We have turned it down in the past.
For them.
You gotta look around the neighborhood, every other house there has a double drive. Every other house.
I know that.
The house
There was a
I know you lived there.
The next door neighbor had applied for a variance that we denied that I noticed is per parking lot that's still there, Sandy. The one, I think there was a lawsuit involving
Yes, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one, the the next house.
Which to which side, left or right?
Well, as you're facing it, to the right, on the right on the corner. And the back lot
The side lot, yes.
There was a parking lot there that he asked for a variance, which I recall us denying.
Right.
It's still there.
I don't know, if it ever got through the court, if anybody's followed up on it.
Okay, um.
You know, the only reason is the convenience for the renters. And it's plenty long enough, like you said, for four cars now. Right, thirty, what is it, sixty-some odd feet long?
Yeah, it's not long, not long enough for four cars.
Three and a half. Somebody's gotta get a shorter car.
Well, let's see, what's what's this, what's the standard parking slot size? You know, what, eight feet by sixteen?
In most municipalities, it's either nine by eighteen or nine, um, some of the handicaps, if you have the spot next to them, they go smaller, but nine by eighteen is sort of standard.
But eighteen feet? Okay. So
That'd be seventy-two.
Four cars would not fit in this driveway. Because it's, that'd, that'd be seventy-two feet. Okay, in four slots.
Almost every house around it had a a wide driveway.
Right.
And they're parking on the front lawn anyway, right?
Yeah, not according to the staff report.
That they're not parking on the
They're there every day.
They're where, every day, on the grass?
The front lawn, you see the tire marks and the bitches.
That's what I said, they're parking on the front lawn anyway.
They have been for years.
Well, isn't the town in a big, um, campaign to stop them from parking on the streets?
Yeah.
So where they gonna park then?
Okay, um. Okay, I
Let's discuss it.
Yeah, I I noticed that it it is a four-bedroom house. Yeah, I, I noticed that it, it, it is a four-bedroom house, and if they have four tenants, um, and, and, um, they're, the tenants are independent, they're not a single family, um, so it's, um, reasonable to assume they'll each have a car. So, one way or another, four cars will be able to park on this, this property. And either, either they go on the street, um, or they go in the yard, and, um, to me, they can't go on the street anymore, so to me, to me, it makes sense, and, um, I think would look better, uh, to widen the driveway, you know, I, um, and I kind of looked around up there, and there are a number of houses that have wide driveways. In some cases, it's because they've got, um, a, a two-car garage.
It's a triple driveway across the street.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm, I'm leaning to grant this, um, and at the same time, recognizing the difficulty that this, this creates, um, but, um, to me, this adding a driveway, actually, the driveway that's there now is in pretty bad shape, um, I think things actually would look a little better, so that's kind of where I'm leaning, so I don't know where everybody else is. Art, you're, you're opposed?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, I don't think four cars in a four-bedroom house, regardless of whether it's a rental or not.
As long as they keep it four apartments. There's nothing to stop those people from putting five or six kids in the house like everybody else does, with more parking. That's the other fear.
They're gonna put as, well, here, they already testified that they can't do more than four.
Well, there's four bedrooms.
Good luck.
Well, I understand that, but we have to assume at some point that people
I'm just stating the fact, let's put it to a vote, put it to a vote.
Okay.
I, I, I just wanted to comment on, on this issue that comes up so often. That these people are coming in and they're requesting, you know, the expanded driveway. How many people
Just do it.
already put pavement on the front?
Yeah, you've got a point there.
And they're accomplishing the same thing, they're, they're dealing with students, and, um, and so, I, I'm inclined to vote against this, but on the other hand, they, they came in and were very straightforward with what they were doing.
That's, you, you've got a point there. Tony, you have a feeling on this?
I, I think the, um, I think the driveway, um, is necessary because of the configuration of the house with the four renters. I don't think it'll, uh, detract from the neighborhood, it's in keeping with many of the other small homes.
They're not doing anything illegal.
One-car garages with double wide driveways, and I think in this case, it's actually gonna enhance the property a little bit. Um, I don't, I kind of, I don't know if he's gonna just, you know, put a, put a slab of, uh, blacktop down alongside of it, you know, or if he's gonna top it, but I think to go to the edge of the house is gonna enhance the look of the house.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Something out of the house with.
And it'll keep them from doing illegal things, especially when the winter comes, so.
Um, could, counselor, could we, um, condition this on the house, um, remaining as a, a four-bedroom?
But that's a, it.
Four-tenant?
That's as far as he can go.
Can't do that.
You just be allowed to have, we allow, um, rentals to have five non-family members in it.
You can have up to five.
Five is the max.
And.
In theory.
That, that's where, that's where it's at, yeah.
If you have graduate students and they're married, um, you might also have, you might have additional issues with that.
So you're saying we could have ten people living in that home?
Eight.
Eight? Five, five graduate students? Eight, we have eight?
I don't know what the code says about the density of the apartment rentals.
Well, five unrelated people.
Five unrelated.
Doesn't change.
No.
No.
The math at all.
Okay.
If they're married, they're related.
Okay, all right, so, uh, let's see, who?
Right, exactly.
Who are we around to, to?
More than five.
Tony, you did the last one.
Did the last one.
Yeah, Carmen.
I'm ready to.
Carmen's up to bat.
Okay, I'm up to bat, and, um.
And, you know.
We're voting to approve here?
Uh, yes.
Uh, okay, uh. I move that the board approve, uh, the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine?
Ten?
This one's set.
Ten, okay, they're, they're listed differently here, okay. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of the visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving.
Staff report, deny. Staff report, right?
Yeah. No, there, there, there's no, there.
There was no staff.
There, there's gonna be a revised finding, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Do I have to, uh, continue? In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings.
Findings the following, okay. Uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Um, the, the board finds that the, uh, that approving, um, a larger driveway, it will be consistent with, um, many of the changes that have occurred in this neighborhood. Um, we've, uh, find that based on the testimony that there will be, um, four tenants in a four-bedroom home, that there will, will be a need for parking for at least four cars, and finds that the expansion of the driveway, uh, will have less of an impact on the character of the neighborhood than would, um, parking on the, um, on the lawn areas or, um, on the street. Uh, two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some other method. The board finds that, um, given the fact that the existing garage is, is a small garage, a single garage, and, um, that there is limited area in the existing driveway, that there are few al- alternatives for the applicant to pursue. Whether the substantial area variance, or whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, it's substantial in the sense that it, uh, doubles the, um, size of the existing driveway, um, uh, let's see, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, uh, the board finds that, um, a, an enlarged driveway, both from a practical and an aesthetic point of view, um, is, has less, far less impact than, um, parking on the lawns or on the street. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, the, um, difficulty is self-created in the sense that, um, the applicant is asking for the larger driveway. It's not self-created in the sense that, um, the home was built, um, with, um, a very, very limited parking options. Okay, um, that's okay with people in terms of, um, kind of modified findings.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the variance in item number ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
We started a six, a movement here.
Approved six-one, okay. Item number eleven, uh, Paula Young, uh, twenty-one eighty-six.
That's adjourned.
Uh, it's been adjourned, uh, and we're gonna go look at the sign as part of our, um, field trip, and pe- people should make a note that we're now gonna have a field trip on Wednesday at nine.
At nine.
Oh, Sandy, you better remind, I'm telling you.
Check, check their calendars, yeah. Okay, item number twelve, uh, Mohinder Mangat.
That's adjourned also.
Forty-seven sites terrace, okay, that, that's adjourned pending, um, his determination.
Pre-advertising.
Well, or, or whether he decides to go forward with this, okay. Item thirteen, uh, Maria DeFranco, eight hundred Main Street. Okay, these are, um, is there a staff report on this?
I don't think so.
Which, where is it?
Okay. Okay, this is the PPG, um, um, request, okay. Two variances, to allow a wall sign of forty-four point sixty-seven square feet where a wall sign shall not exceed fifteen square feet, and to allow a freestanding sign of twenty-four point three-three square feet at a height of eighteen feet, set back from the right-of-way one foot, where, um, one freestanding sign not to exceed twelve square feet and set back ten feet from the right-of-way is permitted. Uh, this is an unli-
And, and? A height variant?
Uh, yeah, that's part of it. It would be allowing a height of eighteen feet, um, which exceeds the twelve, or the, um, set back ten, what, oh, I copied it down wrong. Oh, the, the maximum height is twelve feet, and they're asking for, uh,
Eighteen.
Eighteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, this is an unlisted action. I move that the zoning board declare itself lead agency for the purpose of evaluating the, in, in item thirteen.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, I move that the ZBA, uh, determines based on the environmental assessment form that the actions proposed in item number thirteen will have no significant effect on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals, okay. Okay, uh, what's the feeling on this one?
Okay.
Forty-four point six-seven square foot.
Yeah, the, the standing sign is just replacing something that's already been there.
Yeah.
Although I think the fifteen square feet that's there is probably accessible, they're trying to, you know, originally, when I thought it was just a commercial business, I wasn't too concerned about the need for a larger sign, and, and, but since they were trying to expand their business to include interior design and a more of a civilian customer base, I think that they'd probably do something a little bigger at spots.
Yeah.
It's a new location.
I would also note that they came in with three different renderings, um, and the, the one that meets the code just looks silly on, on that big facade. Um, and the one that is, what they're requesting, the forty-four, is actually less than what was, what was on there. So I, so I, I, I think, I think they're trying to do this. The other thing I would note, and, and I, I say this as somebody who's worked with the Arlington Business Improvement District for a while, the whole idea of that Arlington Center, and the reasons for some of these, was, as the applicant noted, based on trying to make that district kind of pedestrian-friendly, um, the idea is you walk up and down the streets, the, the signs are there, they're, they're, they're really oriented more for pedestrians than they are for, for automobiles. But this is a very odd property. This is unlike almost anything else in the Arlington area, you know, stretching from Main Street to the arterial with this huge parking lot in between, you know, these, the, the two stores, and then, and then Davies and, and the florist. Um, this is, this is, this is just not. There's nothing about this that's designed for pedestrian shopping, I mean, but it's too bad, maybe, but, but it, that's just the way it is, so I don't have any problem, um, approving this one. Okay, um, I guess we're back to you, Paul.
Sorry.
I make a motion to, uh, I move that the board grant the variance set forth in item thirteen. Decision is based upon the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members. In approving the variance, the board adopts findings, determinations as follows.
But there, there's no, um.
There's no staff report.
There's no staff, I would use what she put in there.
Okay.
It's pretty good.
Whether an undesirable change will be produced by the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. This was an existing business that had a larger sign. It's commercial, notwithstanding the fact it's in the ATC district.
They actually lay them out on the next page if you want.
No undesirable change will be created. It's commercial in keeping with the existing neighborhood signage. Uh, whether it can be achieved through some other, uh, method, there's no other method, really, it's based upon the location of the entry, the difference, the locations of the, of the signs, the entrance ways to the parcel and the location of the building. It's not, um, well, it is substantial in the sense that it exceeds what the code requires or prohibits. However, it is replacing, the freestanding signs are just simply a replacement, and the wall sign is in fact smaller than what it's replacing. And, uh, there'll be no adverse physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. It's self-created in the sense that they bought the property that way, but it's not in any way a detriment to, um, approval. So.
Second.
Okay, um, moved and seconded to approve item thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals, approved.
Okay.
Item fourteen, Jeffrey Wexler, twenty-eighth Southgate Drive. Variance to allow a proposed deck to be located sixteen feet from the side lot where twenty feet is required, it's a type-two action. There's a staff report recommending that this be approved. I think this one is
Do you have that?
pretty straightforward.
Staff report?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I don't need much to give.
All right, and Betty, you wanna?
Sure. Uh, I make a motion that the board grant the variance set forth in item number?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings, the determinations as found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve item fourteen's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved seven zero zero. Uh, item fifteen, Philip DiPinto, uh, forty Robin Road. Variance to allow a proposed front porch to be located eleven feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required, and twenty-two feet from the front lot line where twenty feet is required. Type-two action, the staff report recommends approval of this variance.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
This is straightforward.
I think the only question that I had after we, was what kind of a porch it was gonna be, and it's gonna be a a simple, um, porch with a roof and, and a railing. Okay, um, Art, I guess it's your turn.
Sure. I, I move that the board approve the request for area, an area variance for the item fifteen now.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen, it's close. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings, determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve item fifteen's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Opposed, recusals, approved seven, zero, zero. Number sixteen, this is eighteen Longville Road, has been adjourned so that, um, what, we're re-advertising that?
Yes.
Item sixteen? Yeah, okay, based on the new survey. Item number seventeen, uh, Capstone Plaza, this is Big Lots, forty-three Burnett Boulevard. This has been adjourned so that they can submit some alternate, uh, renderings. Okay, we have one other item before us, and that's a request from the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board that they serve as lead agency for, um, the, uh, plan, or the, uh, renovation of White's Hudson River Marina, Dean Point Street, in the jewel of Poughkeepsie.
The jewel of the town, Doug.
I, I, I move that the Town ZBA entrust the action in the jewel of our town to the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board for them to serve as lead agent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to tell me?
Opposed, okay. All right, uh, it's almost eleven o'clock, I thank everybody for their patience and perseverance. Hopefully, the next meeting will be shorter. Okay, um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.